Now, they think that we are going to go forward. Now, he doesn't have much power, but he's there. He's there with a white-black wife in the White House. Black children, black grandmother, mother-in-law, in the White House. We didn't name that idly for no reason. We could have called it the Black House. Black people helped build it initially. No, White House. Just like we could have made the Washington Monument black if we had wanted to. But no, white. System of white supremacy, White House, White Washington Monument. You ever look at the Washington Monument at night? And see those little red eyes? Looks like a Klansman. Not an accident. So, the system, Neely Fuller says, "The system goes through four stages: establishment, maintenance, expansion, and refinement." The refinement stage is, "Do not call that nigger nigger. Give him a white secretary, three white secretaries, but no power." See, this is basically what we have. And it's not an offense to President Obama. President Obama didn't study Neely Fuller's textbook. Although, I sent it to him. I did. I got a beautiful box. It looked like leather volume, leather-bound volume, gold engraving, and put Neely Fuller's book, Put the Crest Theory, in the ISIS papers. I tried to help the brother. I don't know if he ever got it. Do you see? But the system, in other words, establishing the system, maintaining it, expanding it, and refining it. Give them some civil rights legislation. Give them a black president. But then, we're going back to the basics. Mr. Trump, come on in. Do you understand? If it goes forward to the Rodney King position, where we're all just getting along, white will disappear. Now, I've asked audiences of white people, "Do you want your children to be colored? Do you want your grandchildren to be colored? Do you want your great-grandchildren to be colored? Do you want your great-great-great-great-great-great-great-great-grandchildren to be colored?" I'm polite, and they're polite. What do they say? No. So, I say simply, "If you mean that, then you've got to do certain specific things in economics, certain specific things in education, certain specific things in entertainment." There's a series that's coming out. What is it? The Man in the High Castle? And the book is about, and it's gonna be a video series. What if the Nazis had won the Second World War? See, I mean, in other words, they got their whole little thing all tied up and timed. And so, then, they had swastikas all in the subway station in New York. You know, in other words, this is supposed to be built up to advertisement. Not to upset anybody, but they got some complaints in New York, I'm sure with all those Jewish people. If you look at, is it Fox News? No. What is it? I think it's Fox. They've got, their background has changed. It's now red, black, and white. That's the colors of the Nazi flag. And then, they've got some lines going between it, you see, almost like they want to make a swastika. See, they know where they are. While we're talking, can't we all just get along? Now, that would be nice. But that's not the game that's on the table.
Context of White Supremacy. Gusty Renegade in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy. Today's date, Thursday, February 3rd, 2022. So, I have been told, Happy Black History Month, folks in the continental U.S., I reckon, or U.S. period. This is our book club, One Decade. Somewhat sad, at least Gusty is shoving off from Alice Sebold, All Done With Lucky. New worst book ever, Alice Sebold. But that book is not very long, so we are pushing off new book this week. The book for this week, actually kind of going way back to something we were supposed to read a long time ago. The sci-fi favorite, published way back in 1962, Sixty Years. Philip K. Dick's The Man in the High Castle. Now, Gusty, I was indecisive about what we should read next. I was thinking we should read Picking Cotton, which is also about the black male rapist. That's the one where the white woman and the black male, Matthew Cotton, they take turns writing about his wrongful conviction and how he spent, I think, 11 years in greater confinement before he was exonerated and released. But I inquired if listeners, if they had a choice, something that they wanted to read. Picking Cotton, I mentioned, Man in the High Castle, The Price for Their Pound of Flesh, I mentioned as well. And it was a total landslide. Almost everybody, I think, there were maybe one or two folks who picked something other than The Man in the High Castle, but I mean, it was a total rout on all platforms. You can go look at what have you, but yeah, super. I was somewhat surprised, but then even some of the folks wrote in and said, "Oh, man. Man in the High Castle, let's do it." I got this book way back, years ago. Dr. Frances Cresswellzing was still alive. We were talking about reading this book on the book club, and for whatever reason, we got distracted and read other things and did not read this book. But I guess, in the meantime, the whole series was on for four years. It ended in 2019, but it was four seasons. The Amazon streaming series that was very well promoted and talked about, so I don't know if a lot of listeners saw that or just remembered. You heard Dr. Frances Cresswellzing, she was speaking at her final Wellzing Institute. I guess if I could take a moment, it's not bragging because it actually happened and it's nothing to brag about. But Dr. Wellzing got that information from Gus T. and the Cows listeners about this series. The last time that I spoke to Dr. Wellzing before her passing off the air, we talked about a number of things, all related to racism, white supremacy, Ta-Nehisi Coates, Between the World and Me. That book had just been published at the time, so we talked a little bit about the book. I read a little bit, some of the passages that I thought were interesting from the book. And we talked about that series. Because folks know, Dr. Wellzing, she went to Germany to study after she graduated college, and she encouraged, for years, "Study Nazi Germany. You can learn a lot about white supremacy racism." And so, as soon as I saw that this series was about to come out and all the hoopla and they were promoting the series by having swastikas on the subway and what have you in New York, and this caused all kinds of furor. But you heard Dr. Wellzing right there and saying, "Hey, they have their whole package, area of entertainment, whole package, well put together to reinforce the goal, white genetic survival by any means necessary." An investor nudged us to read this book. When I said, "Hey, this is the time, if you, you know, want to make a suggestion." We finished a book, so we are available for a new book, a new suggestion, and folks took advantage. So, Philip K. Dick's Man in the High Castle. I will only say, it would be good to keep in mind some of the great sci-fi franchises in white history. Think Planet of the Apes, even X-Men. These franchises have their genesis in the midst of the 1960s so-called Civil Rights Movement, even if you want to expand globally, because the Planet of the Apes, that book, written by a white man who was born in France. So, even if you want to expand globally, the so-called anti-colonial struggle on the continent and what have, and Vietnam as well, but non-white people all over the world attempting to counter racism, white supremacy, called by different names, but at the exact moment, 1962, that this book is published, and that Planet of the Apes published at the same time. So, I think a lot of times sci-fi can be used to kind of speak to some of the anxieties, fears of individuals classified as white, and this is one of the most celebrated science fiction books of all time. Why, I think so many people were excited about this series for four years. We will go ahead and get started, take great notes. Let's see what we got here. Context of White Supremacy, Ten Years of the Cows Book Club. Philip K. Dick, The Man in the High Castle, Audio Segment One.
This is Audible. Blackstone Audio presents The Man in the High Castle. By Philip K. Dick. To my wife, Tessa, and my son, Christopher, with great and awful love. Chapter One. For a week, Mr. R. Chilton had been anxiously watching the mail, but the valuable shipment from the Rocky Mountain States had not arrived. As he opened up his store on Friday morning and saw only letters on the floor by the mail slot, he thought, "I'm going to have an angry customer." Pouring himself a cup of instant tea from the five-cent wall dispenser, he got a broom and began to sweep. Soon, he had the front of American Artistic Candy Crafts Incorporated, ready for the day, all spick and span with a cash register full of change, a fresh vase of mirigolds, and the radio playing background music. Outdoors along the sidewalk, businessmen hurried toward their offices along Montgomery Street. Far off, a cable car passed. Chilton halted to watch it with pleasure. Women in their long colorful silk dresses, he watched them too. Then the phone rang. He turned to answer it. "Yes," a familiar voice said to his answer. Chilton's heart sank. "This is Mr. Tagomi. Did my Civil War recruiting poster arrive yet, sir? Please recall, you promised it sometime last week." The fussy, brisk voice, barely polite, barely keeping the code. "Did I not give you a deposit, sir, Mr. Chilton, with that stipulation? This is to be a gift, you see. I explained that. A client." "Extensive inquiries," Chilton began, "which I've had made at my own expense, Mr. Tagomi, sir, regarding the promised parcel, which you realize originates outside of this region and is therefore..." But Tagomi broke in. "Then it has not arrived?" "No, Mr. Tagomi, sir." An icy pause. "I can wait no furthermore," Tagomi said. "No, sir." Chilton gazed morosely through the store window at the warm, bright day and the San Francisco office buildings. "A substitute then? Your recommendation, Mr. Chilton?" Tagomi deliberately mispronounced the name, insult within the code that made Chilton's ears burn. Place pulled, the dreadful mortification of their situation. Robert Chilton's aspirations and fears and torments rose up and exposed themselves, swamped him, stopping his tongue. He stammered, his hand sticky on the phone. The air of his store smelled of the mirigolds. The music played on, but he felt as if he were falling into some distant sea. "Well," he managed to mutter, "butter churn? Ice cream maker circa 1900?" His mind refused to think. Just when you forgot about it, just when you fool yourself. He was 38 years old, and he could remember the pre-war days, the other times, Franklin D. Roosevelt and the World's Fair, the former Better World. "Could I bring various desirable items out to your business location?" He mumbled. An appointment was made for 2 o'clock. Have to shut store, he knew as he hung up the phone. No choice, have to keep goodwill of such customers. Business depends on them. Standing shakily, he became aware that someone, a couple, had entered the store. Young man and girl, both handsome, well-dressed, ideal. He calmed himself and moved professionally, easily, in their direction, smiling. They were bending to scrutinize a counter display. It picked up a lovely ashtray. Married, he guessed. Live out in city of the winding mists, the new exclusive apartments on skyline overlooking Belmont. "Hello," he said and felt better. They smiled at him without any superiority, only kindness. His displays, which really were the best of their kind on the coast, had awed them a little. He saw that and was grateful. They understood. "Really excellent pieces, sir," the young man said. Chilton bowed spontaneously. Their eyes, warm not only with human bond, but with the shared enjoyment of the art objects he sold, their mutual tastes and satisfactions remained fixed on him. They were thanking him for having things like these for them to see, pick up and examine, handle perhaps, without even buying. "Yes," he thought. "They know what sort of store they are in. This is not tourist trash, not redwood plaques reading Muir Woods Marin County, PSA, or funny signs, or girly rings, or postcards, or views of the bridge. The girl's eyes especially, large, dark." How easily, Chilton thought, "I could fall in love with a girl like this. How tragic my life then, as if it weren't bad enough already." The stylish black hair, lacquered nails, pierced ears with the long dangling brass handmade earrings. "Your earrings," he murmured. "Purchased here perhaps?" "No," she said. "At home." Chilton nodded. No contemporary American art, only the past could be represented here in a store such as his. "You are here for long?" He asked. "To our San Francisco?" "I'm stationed here indefinitely," the man said. "With standard of living for unfortunate areas planning commission of inquiry." Pride showed on his face. Not the military. Not one of the gum-chewing, boorish draftees with their greedy peasant faces wandering up Market Street, gaping at the body shows, the sex movies, the shooting galleries, the cheap nightclubs with photos of middle-aged blondes holding their nipples between their wrinkled fingers and leering. The honky-tonk jazz slums that made up most of the flat part of San Francisco, rickety tin and board shacks that had sprung up from the ruins even before the last bomb fell. No, this man was of the elite. Cultured, educated, even more so than Mr. Tagomi, who was, after all, a high official with a ranking trade mission on the Pacific Coast. Tagomi was an old man. His attitudes had formed in the war cabinet days. "Had you wished American traditional ethnic art objects as a gift?" Chilton asked. "Or to decorate perhaps a new apartment for your stay here?" If the latter, his heart picked up. "An accurate guess," the girl said. "We are starting to decorate, a bit undecided. Do you think you could inform us?" "I could arrange to arrive at your apartment, yes," Chilton said. "Bringing several hand cases, I can suggest in context at your leisure. This, of course, is our specialty." He dropped his eyes so as to conceal his hope. There might be thousands of dollars involved. "I am getting in a New England table, maple, all wood-pegged, no nails, immense beauty and worth, and a mirror from the time of the 1812 War, and also the Aboriginal art, a group of vegetable-dyed goat hair rugs." "I myself," the man said, "prefer the art of the cities." "Yes," Chilton said eagerly. "Listen, sir, I have a mural from WPA Post Office period, original, done on board, four sections, depicting Horace Greeley, priceless collector's item." "Ah," the man said, his dark eyes flashing. "And a Victrola cabinet of 1920, made into a liquor cabinet." "Ah." "And, sir, listen, framed signed picture of Jean Harlow." The man goggled at him. "Shall we make arrangements?" Chilton said, seizing this correct psychological instant. From his inner coat pocket, he brought his pen, notebook. "I shall take your name and address, sir and lady." Afterward, as the couple strolled from his store, Chilton stood, hands behind his back, watching the street. Joy, if all business days were like this. But it was more than business, the success of his store. It was a chance to meet a young Japanese couple socially, on a basis of acceptance of him as a man, rather than him as a yank, or at best, a tradesman who sold art objects. Yes, these new young people, the rising generation, who did not remember the days before the war, or even the war itself, they were the hope of the world. Place difference did not have the significance for them. "It will end," Chilton thought. Someday, the very idea of place, not governed and governing, but people. And yet, he trembled with fear, imagining himself knocking at their door. He examined his notes. The cassuras, being admitted, no doubt offered tea. Would he do the right thing? Know the proper act and utterance at each moment? Or would he disgrace himself like an animal by some dismal faux pas? The girl's name was Betty. Such understanding in her face, he thought, the gentle sympathetic eyes. Surely, even in the short time in the store, she had glimpsed his hopes and defeats. His hopes? He felt suddenly dizzy. What aspirations bordering on the insane, if not the suicidal, did he have? But it was known, relations between Japanese and Yanks, although generally, it was between a Japanese man and a Yank woman. This, he quailed at the idea. And she was married. He whipped his mind away from the pageant of his involuntary thoughts and began busily opening the morning's mail. His hands, he discovered, were still shaking. And then, he recalled his 2 o'clock appointment with Mr. Tagomi. At that, his hands ceased shaking and his nervousness became determination. "I've got to come up with something acceptable," he said to himself. Where? How? What? A phone call. Sources. Business ability. Scrape up a fully restored 1929 Ford, including fabric top, black. Grand slam to keep patronage forever. Crated original mint trimotor airmail plane discovered in Barn in Alabama, et cetera. Produced mummified head of Mr. B. Bill, including flowing white hair. Sensational American artifact. Make my reputation in top connoisseur circles throughout Pacific, not excluding home islands. To inspire himself, he lit up a marijuana cigarette. Excellent Landis Miles brand. In his room on Hayes Street, Frank Frank lay in bed, wondering how to get up. Sun glared past the blind onto the heap of clothes that had fallen to the floor, his glasses too. Would he step on them? Try to get to bathroom by other route, he thought. Crawl or roll? His head ached, but he did not feel sad. Never looked back, he decided. Time? The clock on the dresser. Eleven thirty. Good grief. But still, he lay. "I'm fired," he thought. Yesterday, he had done wrong at the factory, spouted the wrong kind of talk to Mr. Wyndham Mattson, who had a dished-in face with Socrates-type nose, diamond ring, gold fly zipper. In other words, a power, a throne. Frank's thoughts wandered groggily. "Yes," he thought, "and now they'll blacklist me. My skill is no use, I have no trade. Fifteen years' experience, gone. And now, he would have to appear at the Laborers' Justification Commission for a revision of his work category." Since he had never been able to make out Wyndham Mattson's relationship to the Pinnocks, the puppet white government at Sacramento, he could not fathom his ex-employer's power to sway the real authorities, the Japanese. The LJC was Pinnock-run. He would be facing four or five middle-aged, plump white faces on the order of Wyndham Mattson's. If he failed to get justification there, he would make his way to one of the import-export trade missions which operated out of Tokyo, and which had offices throughout California, Oregon, Washington, and the parts of Nevada included in the Pacific States of America. But if he failed successfully to plead there... Plans roamed his mind as he lay in bed, gazing up at the ancient light fixture in the ceiling. He could, for instance, slip across into the Rocky Mountain States, but it was loosely banded to the PSA and might extradite him. What about the South? His body recoiled. Ugh, not that. As a white man, he would have plenty of place, in fact, more than he had here in the PSA. But he did not want that kind of place. And worse, the South had a cat's cradle of ties, economic, ideological, and God knew what, with the Reich. And Frank Frank was a Jew. His original name was Frank Fink. He had been born on the East Coast in New York, and in 1941, he had been drafted into the Army of the United States of America, right after the collapse of Russia. After the Japs had taken Hawaii, he had been sent to the West Coast. When the war ended, there he was, on the Japanese side of the settlement line. And here he was today, fifteen years later. In 1947, on Capitulation Day, he had more or less gone berserk. Hating the Japs as he did, he had vowed revenge. He had buried his service weapons 10 feet underground, in a basement, well-wrapped and oiled, for the day he and his buddies arose. However, time was the great healer, a fact he had not taken into account. When he thought of the idea now, the great bloodbath, the purging of the Pinnocks and their masters, he felt as if he were reviewing one of those stained yearbooks from his high school days, coming upon an account of his boyhood aspirations. Frank Goldfish Fink is going to be a paleontologist and vows to marry Norma Prout. Norma Prout was the class Shones Machin, and he really had vowed to marry her. That was also goddamn long ago, like listening to Fred Allen or seeing a W.C. Fields movie. Since 1947, he had probably seen or talked to 600,000 Japanese, and the desire to do violence to any or all of them had simply never materialized after the first few months. It just was not relevant anymore. But wait, there was one, a Mr. Omuro, who had bought control of a great area of rental property in downtown San Francisco, and who, for a time, had been Frank's landlord. There was a bad apple, he thought. A shark who had never made repairs, had partitioned rooms smaller and smaller, raised rents. Omuro had gouged the poor, especially the nearly destitute jobless ex-servicemen during the Depression years of the early 50s. However, it had been one of the Japanese trade missions which had cut off Omuro's head for his profiteering. And nowadays, such a violation of the harsh, rigid, but just Japanese civil law was unheard of. It was a credit to the incorruptibility of the Jap occupation officials, especially those who had come in after the war cabinet had fallen. Recalling the rugged, stoic honesty of the trade missions, Frank felt reassured. Even Wyndham Mattson would be waved off like a noisy fly, WM Corporation owner or not. At least, so he hoped. "I guess I really have faith in this co-prosperity Pacific Alliance stuff," he said to himself. Strange. Looking back to the early days, it had seemed such an obvious fake then, empty propaganda. But now... He rose from the bed and unsteadily made his way to the bathroom. While he washed and shaved, he listened to the midday news on the radio. "Let us not deride this effort," the radio was saying as he momentarily shut off the hot water. "No, we won't," Frank thought bitterly. He knew which particular effort the radio had in mind. Yet, there was, after all, something humorous about it, the picture of stolid, grumpy Germans walking around on Mars, on the red sand where no humans had ever stepped before. Lathering his jowls, Frank began a chanting satire to himself. "Gott, Herr Christlicher, ist dies wirklich der Ort, wo man das Konzentrationslager bilden kann? Das Wetter ist so schern, heiß aber doch schön." The radio said, "Co-prosperity civilization must pause and consider whether in our quest to provide a balanced equity of mutual duties and responsibilities, coupled with remunerations..." Typical jargon from the ruling hierarchy, Frank noted. "We have not failed to perceive the future arena in which the affairs of man will be acted out, be they Nordic, Japanese, Negroid..." On and on it went. As he dressed, he molded with pleasure his satire. "The weather is schern, so schern, but there is nothing to breathe." However, it was a fact. The Pacific had done nothing toward colonization of the planets. It was involved, bogged down, rather, in South America. While the Germans were busy bustling enormous robot construction systems across space, the Japs were still burning off the jungles in the interior of Brazil, erecting eight-floor clay apartment houses for ex-headhunters. By the time the Japs got their first spaceship off the ground, the Germans would have the entire solar system sewed up tight. Back in the quaint old history book days, the Germans had missed out while the rest of Europe put the final touches on their colonial empires. However, Frank reflected, they were not going to be last this time. They had learned. And then, he thought about Africa and the Nazi experiment there, and his blood stopped in his veins, hesitated. And then he thought about Africa and the Nazi experiment there, and his blood stopped in his veins, hesitated, at last went on. That huge, empty ruin. The radio said, "We must consider with pride, however, our emphasis on the fundamental physical needs of peoples of all place, their sub-spiritual aspirations, which must be..." Frank shut the radio off. Then, calmer, he turned it back on. Christ on the crapper, he thought, Africa, for the ghosts of dead tribes, wiped out to make a land of... What, who knew? Maybe even the master architects in Berlin did not know. Bunch of automatons, building and toiling away. Building, grinding down. Ogres out of a paleontology exhibit, at their task of making a cup from an enemy's skull, the whole family industriously scooping out the contents, the raw brains, first to eat, then useful utensils of men's leg bones. Thrifty, to think not only of eating the people you did not like, but eating them out of their own skull. The first technicians. Prehistoric man in a sterile white lab coat in some Berlin University lab, experimenting with uses to which other people's skull, skin, ears, fat could be put to. Ja, Herr Doktor. A new youth with a big toe. See, one can adapt the joint for a quick-acting cigarette lighter mechanism. Now if only Herr Krupp can produce it in quantity. It horrified him, this thought, the ancient gigantic cannibal near-man flourishing now, ruling the world once more. We spent a million years escaping him, Frank thought, and now he's back. And not merely as the adversary, but as the master. We can deplore, the radio, the voice of the little yellowbellies from Tokyo was saying. God, Frank thought, and we call them monkeys, these civilized, bandy-lacqued shrimps, who would no more set up gas ovens than they would melt their wives into ceiling wax. And we have deplored often in the past the dreadful waste of humans in this fanatical striving which sets the broader mass of men wholly outside the legal community. They, the Japs, were so strong on law. To quote a Western saint familiar to all, what profit a man if he gain the whole world but in this enterprise lose his soul? The radio paused. Frank, tying his tie, also paused. It was the morning evolution. I have to make my pact with them here, he realized. Blacklisted or not, it'd be death for me if I left Japanese-controlled land and showed up in the South or in Europe, anywhere in the Reich. I'll have to come to terms with old Wyndham Matson. Seated on his bed, a cup of lukewarm tea beside him, Frank got down his copy of the Yi Qing. From their leather tube, he took the forty-nine Yarrow stocks. He considered, until he had his thoughts properly controlled and his questions worked out. Aloud, he said, "How should I approach Wyndham Matson in order to come to decent terms with him?" He wrote the question down on the tablet, then began whipping the Yarrow stocks from hand to hand, until he had the first line, the beginning. And eight, half the sixty-four hexagrams eliminated already. He divided the stocks and obtained the second line. Soon, being so expert, he had all six lines. The hexagram lay before him, and he did not need to identify it by the chart. He could recognize it as hexagram fifteen. Chin, modesty. Ah, the low will be raised up, the high brought down, powerful families humbled. He did not have to refer to the text, he knew it by heart. A good omen, the oracle was giving him favorable counsel. And yet he was a bit disappointed. There was something thatuous about hexagram fifteen, too goody-goody. Naturally, he should be modest. Perhaps there was an idea in it, however. After all, he had no power over old WM, he could not compel him to take him back. All he could do was adopt the point of view of hexagram fifteen. This was that sort of moment, when one had to petition, to hope, to await with faith. Heaven in its time would raise him up to his old job, or perhaps even to something better. He had no lines to read, no nines or sixes, it was static, so he was through. It did not move into a second hexagram. A new question then. Setting himself, he said aloud, "Will I ever see Juliana again?" That was his wife, or rather, his ex-wife. Juliana had divorced him a year ago, and he had not seen her in months. In fact, he did not even know where she lived. Evidently, she had left San Francisco, perhaps even the PSA. Either their mutual friends had not heard from her, or they were not telling him. Visibly, he maneuvered the Yarrow stocks, his eyes fixed on the tallies. How many times he had asked about Juliana, one question or another. Here came the hexagram, brought forth by the passive chance workings of the vegetable stalks. Random, and yet rooted in the moment in which he lived, in which his life was bound up with all other lives and particles in the universe. The necessary hexagram picturing in its pattern of broken and unbroken lines the situation. He, Juliana, the factory on Goff Street, the trade missions that ruled, the exploration of the planets, the billion chemical heaps in Africa that were now not even corpses, the aspirations of the thousands around him in the shanty warrens of San Francisco, the mad creatures in Berlin with their calm faces and manic plans. All connected, in this moment of casting the Yarrow stocks, to select the exact wisdom appropriate in a book begun in the thirtieth century B.C., a book created by the sages of China over a period of five thousand years. Winnowed, perfected, that superb cosmology and science, codified, before Europe had even learned to do long division. The hexagram. His heart dropped, forty-four, ku, coming to meet, it sobering judgment. The maiden is powerful, one should not marry such a maiden. Again, he had gotten it in connection with Juliana. I ve, he thought, settling back. So she was wrong for me. I know that, I didn't ask that. Why does the oracle have to remind me? A bad fate for me, to have met her and been in love, be in love with her. Juliana, the best-looking woman he had ever married. Soot-black eyebrows and hair, trace amounts of Spanish blood distributed as pure color even to her lips. Her rubbery, soundless walk. She had worn saddle shoes left over from high school. In fact, all her clothes had a dilapidated quality, and a definite suggestion of being old and often washed. He and she had been so broke so long, that despite her looks, she had to wear a cotton sweater, cloth-zippered jacket, brown tweed skirt and bobby socks. And she hated him and it because it made her look, she had said, like a woman who played tennis, or even worse, collected mushrooms in the woods. But above and beyond everything else, he had originally been drawn by her screwball expression. For no reason, Juliana greeted strangers with a portentous, nudnik Mona Lisa smile that hung them up between responses, whether to say hello or not. And she was so attractive that more often than not they did say hello, whereupon Juliana glided by. At first he had thought it was just plain bad eyesight, but finally he had decided that it revealed deep-dyed, otherwise concealed stupidity at her core. And so, finally, her borderline flicker of greeting to strangers had annoyed him, as had her plant-like, silent, "I'm on a mysterious errand" way of coming and going. But even then, toward the end, when they had been fighting so much, he still never saw her as anything but a direct, literal invention of God's, dropped into his life for reasons he would never know. And on that account, a sort of religious intuition of faith about her, he could not get over having lost her. She seemed so close right now, as if he still had her. That spirit, still busy in his life, padding through his room in search of whatever it was Juliana sought. And in his mind, whenever he took up the volumes of the oracle. Seated on his bed, surrounded by a lonely disorder, preparing to go out and begin his day, Frank Frank wondered who else in the vast, complicated city of San Francisco was at this same moment consulting the oracle. And were they all getting as gloomy advice as he? Was the tenor of the moment as adverse for them as it was for him? Chapter Two. Mr. Nobuzuki Tagomi sat consulting the divine fifth book of Confucian wisdom, the Taoist oracle called for centuries the Yi Qing, or Book of Changes. At noon that day, he had begun to become apprehensive about his appointment with Mr. Chilton, which would occur in two more hours. His suite of offices on the twentieth floor of the Nippon Times Building on Taylor Street overlooked the bay. Through the glass wall, he could watch ships entering, passing beneath the Golden Gate Bridge. At this moment, a freighter could be seen beyond Alcatraz, but Mr. Tagomi did not care. Going to the wall, he unfastened the cord and lowered the bamboo blinds over the view. The large central office became darker, he did not have to squint against the glare. Now he could think more clearly. It was not within his power, he decided, to please his client. No matter what Mr. Chilton came up with, the client would not be impressed. Let us face that, he said to himself. But we can keep him from becoming displeased, at least. We can refrain from insulting him by a moldy gift. The client would soon reach San Francisco Airport by avenue of the high-placed new German rocket, the Messerschmitt nine E. Mr. Tagomi had never ridden on such a ship. When he met Mr. Baines, he would have to take care to appear blasé, no matter how large the rocket turned out to be. Now to practice. He stood in front of the mirror on the office wall, creating a face of composure, mildly bored, inspecting his own cold features for any giveaway. Yes, they are very noisy, Mr. Baines, sir, one cannot read. But then the flight from Stockholm to San Francisco is only forty-five minutes. Perhaps then, a word about German mechanical failures? I suppose you heard the radio, that crash over Madagascar. I must say, there is something to be said for the old piston planes. Essential to avoid politics, for he did not know Mr. Baines's views on leading issues of the day. Yet they might arise. Mr. Baines, being Swedish, would be a neutral. Yet he had chosen Lufthansa rather than SAS, a cautious ploy. Mr. Baines, sir, they say Herr Borman is quite ill, that a new Reich's chancellor will be chosen by the Partai this autumn. Rumor only, so much secrecy, alas, between Pacific and Reich. In the folder on his desk, clipping from New York Times of a recent speech by Mr. Baines. Mr. Tagomi now studied it critically, bending due to slight failure of correction by his contact lenses. The speech had to do with need of exploring once more, ninety-eighth time, for sources of water on the moon. "We may still solve this heartbreaking dilemma," Mr. Baines was quoted. "Our nearest neighbor, and so far the most unrewarding except for military purposes." Sick, Mr. Tagomi thought, using high-placed Latin word. Clue to Mr. Baines, looks askance at merely military. Mr. Tagomi made a mental note. Touching the intercom button, Mr. Tagomi said, "Miss Afrikan, I would like you to bring in your tape recorder, please." The outer office door slid to one side, and Miss Afrikan, today pleasantly adorned with blue flowers in her hair, appeared. "Bit of lilac," Mr. Tagomi observed. Once he had professionally flower-raised back home on Hokkaido. Miss Afrikan, a tall, brown-haired Armenian girl, bowed. "Ready with ZipTrak Speedmaster?" Mr. Tagomi asked. "Yes, Mr. Tagomi." Miss Afrikan seated herself, the portable battery-operated tape recorder ready. Mr. Tagomi began, "I enquired of the oracle, will the meeting between myself and Mr. Chilton be profitable? And obtained to my dismay the ominous hexagram, the preponderance of the great. The ridgepole is sagging, too much weight in the middle, all unbalanced, clearly away from the Tao." The tape recorder whirred. Pausing, Mr. Tagomi reflected. Miss Afrikan watched him expectantly, the whirring ceased. "Have Mr. Ramsay come in for a moment, please?" Mr. Tagomi said. "Yes, Mr. Tagomi." Rising, she put down the tape recorder, her heels tapped as she departed from the office. With a large folder of bills of lading under his arm, Mr. Ramsay appeared. Young, smiling, he advanced, wearing the natty U.S. Midwest Plains string tie, checkered shirt, and tight, beltless blue jeans, considered so high-placed among the style-conscious of the day. "Howdy, Mr. Tagomi," he said, "right nice day, sir." Mr. Tagomi bowed. At that, Mr. Ramsay stiffened abruptly and also bowed. "I've been consulting the oracle," Mr. Tagomi said, as Miss Afrikan reseated herself with her tape recorder. "You understand that Mr. Baines, who, as you know, is arriving shortly in person, holds to the Nordic ideology regarding so-called Oriental culture. I could make the effort to dazzle him into a better comprehension with authentic works of Chinese scroll art or ceramics of our Tokugawa period, but it is not our job to convert." "I see," Mr. Ramsay said, his Caucasian face twisted with painful concentration. "Therefore, we will cater to his prejudice and graft a priceless American artifact to him instead." "Yes." "You, sir, are of American ancestry, although you have gone to the trouble of darkening your skin color," he scrutinized Mr. Ramsay. "A tan achieved by a sun lamp," Mr. Ramsay murmured, "for merely acquiring vitamin D." But his expression of humiliation gave him away. "I assure you that I retain authentic roots with..." Mr. Ramsay stumbled over the words. "I have not cut off all ties with native ethnic patterns." Mr. Tagomi said to Miss Afrikan, "Resume, please." Once more, the tape recorder whirred. "In consulting the oracle and obtaining hexagram Ta Kuo twenty-eight, I further received the unfavorable line nine in the fifth place. It reads, 'A withered papa puts forth flowers, an older woman takes a husband. No blame, no praise.'" "This clearly indicates that Mr. Chilton would have nothing of worth to offer us at all." Mr. Tagomi paused. "Let us be candid. I cannot rely on my own judgment regarding American art objects, but that is why, uh..." He lingered over his choice of terms. "Why you, Mr. Ramsay, who are, shall I say, native-born, are required. Obviously, we must do the best we can." Mr. Ramsay had no answer, but despite his efforts to conceal, this feature showed hurt, anger, a frustrated and mute reaction. "Now," Mr. Tagomi said, "I have further consulted the oracle. For purposes of policy, I cannot divulge to you, Mr. Ramsay, the question." In other words, his tone meant, you and your Pinnock kind are not entitled to share the important matters which we deal in. "It is efficient to say, however, that I received a most provocative response. It has caused me to ponder at length." Both Mr. Ramsay and Miss Afrikan watched him intently. "It deals with Mr. Baines," Mr. Tagomi said. They nodded. "My question regarding Mr. Baines produced through the occult workings of the Tao, the hexagram Sheng forty-six, a good judgment, and line six at the beginning, and nine in the second place." His question had been, will I be able to deal with Mr. Baines successfully? And the nine in the second place had assured him that he would. It read, "If one is sincere, it furthers one to bring even a small offering, no blame." Obviously, Mr. Baines would be satisfied by whatever gift the ranking trade mission grafted to him through the good offices of Mr. Tagomi. But Mr. Tagomi, in asking the question, had had a deeper query in the back of his mind, one of which he was barely conscious. As so often, the oracle had perceived that more fundamental query, and, while answering the other, had taken it upon itself to answer the subliminal one too. "As we know," Mr. Tagomi said, "Mr. Baines is bringing us detailed account of new injection molds developed in Sweden. Were we successfully to sign agreement with his firm, we could no doubt replace many present metals, quite scarce, with plastics." For years, the Pacific had been trying to get basic assistance in the synthetics field from the Reich. However, the big German chemical cartels, IG Farben in particular, had harbored their patents, had in fact created a world monopoly in plastics, especially in the development of the polysters. By this means, Reich trade had kept an edge over Pacific trade, and in technology, the Reich was at least ten years ahead. The interplanetary rockets leaving Fechtung Europa consisted mainly of heat-resistant plastics, very light in weight, so hard that they survived even major meteor impact. The Pacific had nothing of this sort. Natural fibers such as wood were still used, and of course ubiquitous pot metals. Mr. Tagomi cringed as he thought about it. He had seen at trade fairs some of the advanced German work, including an all-synthetic automobile, the DSS Der Schnell Spuk, which sold in PSA currency for about six hundred dollars. But his underlying question, one which he could never reveal to the Pinnocks flitting about trade mission offices, had to do with an aspect of Mr. Baines suggested by the original coded cable from Tokyo. First of all, coded material was infrequent, and dealt usually with matters of security, not with trade deals. And the cipher was the metaphor type, utilizing poetic allusion, which had been adopted to baffle the Reich monitors, who could crack any literal code no matter how elaborate. So clearly it was the Reich whom the Tokyo authorities had in mind, not quasi-disloyal cliques in the home islands. The key phrase, skim milk in his diet, referred to Pinafore, to the eerie song that expounded the doctrine, "Things are seldom what they seem, skim milk masquerades as cream." And the Yi Qing, when Mr. Tagomi had consulted it, had fortified his insight. Its commentary, "Here a strong man is presupposed. It is true he does not fit in with his environment, inasmuch as he is too brusque and pays too little attention to form. But as he is upright in character, he meets with response." The insight was simply that Mr. Baines was not what he seemed, that his actual purpose in coming to San Francisco was not to sign a deal for injection molds, that in fact, Mr. Baines was a spy. But for the life of him, Mr. Tagomi could not figure out what sort of spy, for whom, or for what. At one forty that afternoon, Robert Chilton, with enormous reluctance, locked the front door of American Artistic Handcrafts Inc. He lugged his heavy cases to the He lugged his heavy cases to the curb, hailed a pedicab, and told the chink to take him to the Nippon Times Building. The chink, gaunt-faced, hunched over and perspiring, gasped a place-conscious acknowledgment, and began loading Mister Chilton's bags aboard. Then, having assisted Mister Chilton himself into the carpet-lined seat, the chink clicked on the meter, mounted his own seat, and pedaled off along Montgomery Street, among the cars and buses. The entire day had been spent finding the item for Mister Tagomi, and Chilton's bitterness and anxiety almost overwhelmed him as he watched the buildings pass. And yet, triumph! The separate skill, apart from the rest of him, he had found the right thing, and Mister Tagomi would be mollified, and his client, whoever he was, would be overjoyed. "I always give satisfaction," Chilton thought, "to my customers." He had been able to procure, miraculously, an almost mint copy of Volume One, Number One of Tip Top Comics. Dating from the thirties, it was a choice piece of Americana, one of the first funny books, a prize collector searched for constantly. Of course, he had other items with him to show first. He would lead up gradually to the funny book, which lay well-protected in a leather case packed in tissue paper at the center of the largest bag. The radio of the pedicab blared out popular tunes, competing with the radios of other cabs, cars, and buses. Chilton did not hear, he was used to it, nor did he take notice of the enormous neon signs, with their permanent ads obliterating the front of virtually every large building. After all, he had his own sign. At night, it blazed on and off in company with all the others of the city. What other way did one advertise? One had to be realistic. In fact, the uproar of radios, traffic noises, the signs, and people lulled him. They blotted out his inner worries, and it was pleasurable to be peddled along by another human being, to feel the straining muscles of the chink transmitted in the form of regular vibrations, a sort of relaxing machine, Chilton reflected, to be pulled instead of having to pull, and to have, if even for a moment, higher place. Guiltily, he woke himself, too much to plan, no time for a midday doze. Was he absolutely properly dressed to enter the Nippon Times Building? Possibly he would faint in the high-speed elevator, but he had motion-illness tablets with him, a German compound. The various modes of address, he knew them, whom to treat politely, whom rudely, be brusque with the doorman, elevator operator, receptionist, guide, any janitorial person, bow to any Japanese, of course, even if it obliged him to bow hundreds of times. But the Pinnocks, nebulous area, bow but look straight through them, as if they did not exist. Did that cover every situation, then? What about a visiting foreigner? Germans often could be seen at the trade missions, as well as neutrals. And then, too, he might see a slave. German or South ships docked at the port of San Francisco all the time, and blacks occasionally were allowed off for short intervals, always in groups of fewer than three, and they could not be out after nightfall, even under Pacific law, they had to obey the curfew. But also slaves unloaded at the docks, and these lived perpetually ashore, in shacks under the wharves above the waterline. None would be in the trade mission offices, but if any unloading were taking place, for instance, should he carry his own bags to Mister Tagomi's office? Surely not. A slave would have to be found, even if he had to stand waiting an hour, even if he missed his appointment. It was out of the question to let a slave see him carrying something. He had to be quite careful of that. A mistake of that kind would cost him dearly. He would never have place of any sort again among those who saw. In a way, Chilton thought, I would almost enjoy carrying my own bags into the Nippon Times Building in broad daylight. What a grand gesture! It is not actually illegal. I would not go to jail, and I would show my real feelings, the side of a man which never comes out in public life. But... I could do it, he thought. If there weren't those damned black slaves lurking around, I could endure those above me seeing it, their scorn. After all, they scorn me and humiliate me every day, but to have those beneath see me, to feel their contempt, like this chink pedaling away ahead of me, if I hadn't taken a pedicab, if he had seen me trying to walk to a business appointment... One had to blame the Germans for the situation, tendency to bite off more than they could chew. After all, they had barely managed to win the war, and at once, they had gone off to conquer the solar system, while at home, they had passed edicts which, well, at least the idea was good. And, after all, they had been successful with the Jews and Gypsies and Bible students, and the Slavs had been rolled back two thousand years' worth to their heartland in Asia. Out of Europe entirely, to everyone's relief, back to riding yaks and hunting with bow and arrow, and those great glossy magazines printed in Munich and circulated around to all the libraries and newsstands. One could see the full-page colored pictures for oneself, the blue-eyed, blond-haired Aryan settlers who now industriously tilled, culled, plowed, and so forth, in the vast grain bowl of the world, the Ukraine. Those fellows certainly looked happy, and their farms and cottages were clean. You didn't see pictures of drunken, dull-witted poles anymore, slouched on sagging porches or hawking a few sickly turnips at the village market. All the thing of the past, like rutted dirt roads that once turned to slop in the rainy season, bogging down the carts. But Africa, they had simply let their enthusiasm get the better of them there, and you had to admire that, although more thoughtful advice would have cautioned them to perhaps let it wait a bit until, for instance, Project Farmland had been completed. Now there, the Nazis had shown genius, the artist in them had truly emerged. The Mediterranean Sea bottled up, drained, made into terrible farmland through the use of atomic power, what daring! How the Sniggerers had been set back on their heels, for instance, certain scoffing merchants along Montgomery Street. And as a matter of fact, Africa had almost been successful, but in a project of that sort, "almost" was an ominous word to begin to hear. Rosenberg's well-known powerful pamphlet issued in nineteen fifty-eight, the word had first shown up then. "As to the final solution of the African problem, we have almost achieved our objectives. Unfortunately, however..." Still, it had taken two hundred years to dispose of the American aborigines, and Germany had almost done it in Africa in fifteen years, so no criticism was legitimately in order. Chilton had, in fact, argued it out recently while having lunch with certain of those other merchants. They expected miracles, evidently, as if the Nazis could remold the world by magic. No, there was science and technology in that fabulous talent for hard work. The Germans never stopped applying themselves, and when they did a task, they did it right. And anyhow, the flights to Mars had distracted world attention from the difficulty in Africa. So it all came back to what he had told his fellow store owners. "What the Nazis have which we lack is nobility. Admire them for their love of work or their efficiency, but it's the dream that stirs one. Space flights first to the moon, then to Mars. If that isn't the oldest yearning of mankind, our finest hope for glory." Now, the Japanese, on the other hand, I know them pretty well, I do business with them, after all, day in and day out, they are, let's face it, Orientals, yellow people. We whites have to bow to them because they hold the power, but we watch Germany. We see what can be done where whites have conquered, and it's quite different. "We approach the Nippon Times Building, sir," the chink said, his chest heaving from the exertion of the hill-climbing. He slowed now. To himself, Chilton tried to picture Mister Tagomi's client. Clearly, the man was unusually important. Mister Tagomi's tone on the telephone, his immense agitation, had communicated the fact. Image of one of Chilton's own very important clients, or rather, customers, swam up into his mind, a man who had done a good deal to create for Chilton a reputation among the high-placed personages residing in the Bay Area. Four years ago, Chilton had not been the dealer in the rare and desirable which he was now. He had operated a small, rather dimly-lighted second-hand bookshop on Geary. His neighboring stores sold used furniture, or hardware, or did laundry. It was not a nice neighborhood. At night, strong-arm robberies and sometimes rape took place on the sidewalk, despite the efforts of the San Francisco Police Department, and even the Kempeitai, the Japanese higher-ups. All store windows had iron gratings fitted over them once the business day had ended, this to prevent forcible entry. Yet into this district of the city had come an elderly Japanese ex-army man, a Major Ito Humo. Tall, slender, white-haired, walking and standing stiffly, Major Huma had given Chilton his first inkling of what might be done with his line of merchandise. "I am a collector," Major Huma had explained. He spent an entire afternoon searching among the heaps of old magazines in the store. In his mild voice, he had explained something which Chilton could not quite grasp at the time. To many wealthy, cultured Japanese, the historic objects of American popular civilization were of equal interest alongside the more formal antiques. Why this was so, the major himself did not know. He was particularly addicted to the collecting of old magazines dealing with U.S. brass buttons, as well as the buttons themselves. It was on the order of coin or stamp collecting. No rational explanation could ever be given, and high prices were being paid by wealthy collectors. "I will give you an example," the major had said. "Do you know what is meant by 'haws of war' cards?" He had eyed Chilton with avidity. Searching his memory, Chilton had at last recalled, the cards had been dispensed during his childhood with bubble gum, a centerpiece. There had been a series of them, each card depicting a different horror. "A dear friend of mine," the major had gone on, "collects haws of war. He lacks but one now, the sinking of the Panay. He has offered a substantial sum of money for that particular card." "Flip cards," Chilton had said suddenly. "Saw? We flipped them. There was a head and a tail side on each card." He had been about eight years old. "Each of us had a pack of flip cards. We stood, two of us facing each other. Each of us dropped a card so that it flipped in the air. The boy whose card landed with the head side up, the side with the picture, won both cards." How enjoyable to recall those good days, those early, happy days of his childhood. Considering, Major Huma had said, "I have heard my friend discuss his haws of war cards, but he has never mentioned this. It is my opinion that he does not know how these cards actually were put to use." Eventually, the major's friend had shown up at the store to hear Chilton's historically firsthand account. That man, also a retired officer of the Imperial Army, had been fascinated. "Bottle caps!" Chilton had exclaimed without warning. The Japanese had blinked incomprehendingly. "We used to collect the tops from milk bottles, as kids, the round tops that gave the name of the dairy. There must have been thousands of dairies in the United States, each one printed a special top." The officer's eyes had glinted with the instinct. "Do you possess any of your sometime collection, sir?" Naturally, Chilton did not, but probably, it was still possible to obtain the ancient, long-forgotten tops from the days before the war, when milk could come in glass bottles, rather than throw away pasteboard cartons. And so, by stages, he had gotten into the business. Others had opened similar places, taking advantage of the ever-growing Japanese craze for Americana, but Chilton had always kept his edge. "You're fair," the chink was saying, bringing him out of his meditation. "It's a dollar, sir." He had unloaded the bags and was waiting. Absentmindedly, Chilton bade him. Yes, it was quite likely that the client of Mister Tagomi resembled Major Huma, at least, Chilton thought, partly, from my point of view. He had dealt with so many Japanese, but he still had difficulty telling them apart. There were the short-squat ones, built like wrestlers, then the druggist-like ones, the tree-shrub flower-gardener ones. He had his categories, and the young ones, who were to him not like Japanese at all. Mister Tagomi's client would probably be portly, a businessman, smoking a Philippine cigar. And then, standing before the Nippon Times Building, with his bags on the sidewalk beside him, Chilton suddenly thought with a chill. Suppose his client isn't Japanese? Everything in the bags had been selected with them in mind, their tastes. But the man had to be Japanese. A Civil War recruiting poster had been Mister Tagomi's original order. Surely only a Japanese would care about such debris, typical of their mania for the trivial, their legalistic fascination with documents, proclamations, ads. He remembered one who had devoted his leisure time to collecting newspaper ads of American patent medicines of the nineteen hundreds. There were other problems to face, immediate problems. Through the high doors of the Nippon Times Building, men and women hurried, all of them well-dressed, their voices reaching Chilton's ears, and he started into motion. A glance upward at the towering edifice, the highest building in San Francisco, wall of offices, windows, the fabulous design of the Japanese architects, and the surrounding gardens of dwarf evergreens, rocks, the Kerasansui landscape, sand imitating a dried-up stream winding past roots among simple, irregular, flat stones. He saw a black who had carried baggage, now free. At once, Chilton called, "Parker!" The black trotted toward him, smiling. "To the twentieth floor," Chilton said in his harshest voice, "sweet B, at once." He indicated the bags, and then strode on toward the doors of the building. Naturally, he did not look back. A moment later, he found himself being crowded into one of the express elevators, mostly Japanese around him, their clean faces shining slightly in the brilliant light of the elevator. Then the nauseating upward thrust of the elevator, the rapid click of floors passing. He shut his eyes, planted his feet firmly, prayed for the flight to end. The black, of course, had taken the bags up on a service elevator. It would not have been within the realm of reason to permit him here. In fact, Chilton opened his eyes and looked momentarily. He was one of the few whites in the elevator. When the elevator let him off on the twentieth floor, Chilton was already bowing mentally, preparing himself for the encounter in Mister Tagomi's offices.
Context of white supremacy. Well, we will pick up on chapter three, for folks following along. The number to dial, seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred. The code, five-six-four-nine-four-three, pound. Press star-six-one if you would like to participate. The number again, seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred. The code, five-six-four-nine-four-three, pound. Press star-six-one if you would like to participate. The email, untiljustice@gmail.com. Hopefully, folks will have commentary to share, we won't have lots of spectating. I was indecisive about the book, as I said at the beginning, and it was a landslide, so hopefully, some, if not all, of the folks who voted, Man in the High Castle, some of the folks who picked this book said, "Hey, I already got this book. I've been waiting for years for you to read this in the book club." So lots of folks should have commentary. The email, untiljustice@gmail.com. Feel free to share. Let's see, I'll read a little bit from one of the emails. I will only say, the thread connecting these two books, I try to do that frequently, connect to other books, especially the book that we read immediately preceding this one. Two books in a row feature the word "negroid." What in the world? And I mean, you could not get genres more dissimilar. Sci-fi, right? Man in the High Castle, and then, I don't even know what you put that under, is negro rapist, is that a genre? Sci-fi, and I bet there's going to be some negro rape here, but negro rapist sci-fi, is that maybe, uh, women's liberation, maybe? Women's empowerment, kinda? Women's studies, maybe? And sci-fi? Either way, which is all kinda negro rapist anyway, but, uh, yeah, two super dissimilar genres and we still got negroid. Some things do not change. Uh, so, one of our investors wrote in, uh, okay, here we go. "Greetings, Gus. This will be my second time reading, uh, this will be my second reading of a so-called dystopian novel during the last couple of years. I read The Handmaid's Tale at the beginning of the first COVID-nineteen lockdown in 2020, both made into popular TV shows. Hmm. Chapter one. Tagomi deliberately mispronounced a name, insult within the code that made Chilton's ears burn. The word "code" stood out to me at the beginning of this book." Mm-hmm, said a few times, right? Number two, framed, signed picture of Jean Harlow. The man, uh, ogled at him. Ogled, I almost said it's googled, that's how it's said. Uh, Jean Harlow, a Hollywood movie star of the nineteen thirties, probably someone mentioned in Woody Allen's biography, is considered the archetype of the blonde bombshell, which is such a pervasive figure in U.S. entertainment. Incidentally, when I was searching her, it said that she was the bad girl. If you want two direct connects to the book that we just read, where she kept mentioning over and over and over about good girls and good girls and good girls, Jean Harlow was the quintessential bad girl. Still blonde, white. Number three. Would he do the right thing, know the proper act, or disgrace himself like an animal? A code, according to Neely Fuller, provides dos and don'ts. I suspect being codified is going to be an important theme in this book. I think so, too, even though I have not read it, and I have not seen the television program either. Number four, Nordic-Japanese negroid. Trace amounts of Spanish blood. Precise categorization of people by race or ethnicity seems like it is going to be a very, or to be very important in this world. or to be very important in this world. Absolutely. When a racial classification's not important, negroid in the last book. Number five, making a cup from the enemy's skull. This entire paragraph reminded me of the delectable negro. Also, the Cows Book Club, ten years. Number six, a book begun in the thirteenth century B.C., codified before Europe had even begun learning long division. More references to a code. I'll stop at chapter one, we'll pick up chapter two after we hear from some of the folks who dialed in. So the number again is seven two zero, seven one six, seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. Uh, let's see. Folks who dialed in with a hand up, uh, Iri in Louisiana. Uh, should be with us, feel free. Iri, I don't know if you, uh, hit your mute button.
I need, uh, I need like, uh, thirty seconds or like a minute. I'm sorry about that, something just happened.
I feel you, it has been a rough one, take your time. While, uh, we wait, hear from, uh, Iri. Uh, star six one for other folks who are with us, listening in. Let's see, I'll share, I'll rewind. Number one, I was gonna say about TV, this will give me a great opportunity to share my thought about that. I've not seen the television series, although that might be instructive. If people who have seen it, and as we're reading along, I'm not interested in hearing like a play-by-play of the TV series, but just if you wanna pick out any compare and contrast between what we're reading as we're going along in the film, that's great. But again, not, uh, we do not need a retelling of the film or the TV show. And, this is one where I can't even recommend, if you have not seen the television series, I'm not gonna recommend that you watch it. I normally would, right? With Lucky, I said, oh yeah, if you wanna read Lovely, uh, The Lovely Bones, feel free. If you wanna watch The Lovely Bones, the movie, feel free. In terms of actually watching the whole television series, no way. And the reason I say that, this book is not that long. We'll probably be done in like a month and a half. It's about the same length as Lucky. Maybe a month and a half, somewhere in there, it's not super long. This was a four-year series. I think the series is prob, it would take you probably about forty hours, maybe longer than that, but I would say somewhere around forty hours to watch the whole television series. This is not even ten hours, the book. I don't, I don't even generally recommend TV shows because I just, time and energy. Like a movie that you can watch in ninety minutes or whatever, study, make your notes or whatever, beyond. But four years, forty hours, are you serious? Like, that's crazy. Like, I generally don't recommend TV programs. I don't watch TV programs when people recommend them. Like, we have got substantially greater problems in the system of white supremacy racism. I have never, in my life, watched a television series that helped me solve a problem or in any way moved me closer to replacing white supremacy with justice. If this was just one movie that was ninety minutes, or maybe three hours, or something reasonable, I'd say, oh yeah, check it out. Let's compare all the rest of it, but shh. Gus T. did not watch, uh, this series, and I even, I tried to. When I talked about it with Dr. Welzing, I went and I watched like the first episode or so, maybe first two, and I just was not hooked, captivated, as they say, and I never got back into it. It was on for four whole years and I never got back into it. Even now, I've watched one episode. No guarantee I will get all the way through four seasons worth of content, but, woo, reading more important than watching television. And, let me give one more Alice Sebold comparison, and then we'll see if, uh, Iri is with us. Uh, the author, Philip K. Dick, or two things I can say really good. One, people should keep in mind, Philip K. Dick, he wrote this book. He also wrote The Minority Report, people see that, Tom Cruise? Yes, no, maybe? Think they made a TV show out of that too. He wrote that as well, which became hugely popular after his death, so trying to keep that in mind. Also, Rick James. Uh, Philip K. Dick married and divorced five times. One, two, three, four, five. Not passing judgment on any listeners, if you've been married three or eight times, but that is a little high. Five times for someone who didn't live to be like seventy-year-olds or anything, but, whatever. Uh, and he is reported to have some sort of drug problem. That's what I said, like, that is total Rick James again, super freaks, so quite a few. Maybe it's not just negroid connecting the book we just finished, Lucky, to the man in the high castle. But yeah, that kinda stood out to me. He even had a, cause he, he dedicated this wife, uh, book to his wife at the beginning. I was like, which one? There are five of them. Anywho, uh, do not allow me to rush you because I have my own notes and then our investor wrote in as well. So, oh, she's ready to roll, yes ma'am, Iri.
Yeah, uh, thank you for letting me, uh, share. Good evening, everybody. Uh, really quick. So, once I realized what this book was about, cause I didn't know about a, a series, I don't really watch TV. Um, and I'm a little bit ashamed to say that, um, I let go of the science fiction element of my reading. So I was excited when I heard about this, cause I can't remember the book I had to read in high school, but, um, it, it really kept my attention. But, um, in the beginning, when he was talking about, um, you know, Germany and Japan, what came into my mind is how there's a cosplay in Japan that they call Nazi chic. And Japanese people, they don't even dress like, uh, dress up like the Japanese Imperial, whatever it was, military army for that time, they dress up like Nazis. And it's, it, I'm curious as to the white identification, when they have their own symbols and uniforms that they could promote from that time? And also, um, oh yeah, when he mentioned that somebody wanted some Civil War, um, uh, was it propaganda or whatever, you know, I, I, their white identification really stood out to me then. And I was curious as to why they, oh, took the position they did in the area of war. Um, like, was it that they realized they're a minority? Not a minority, but an ethnic minority among other Asians? And so they copied a white supremacist tactic to, you know, for world domination? I, I'm confused, I'm still learning. So I guess something about that's gonna come out in the book. And Gus, if you wanna go on a sci-fi role, I just learned, uh, about a book called The Other Hand by Ray Bradbury, um, from the Welzing Institute session maybe like a week and a half ago. Uh, apparently, uh, non-white black people specifically make it to Mars, and then, and, you know, they're completely isolated from white people, but then the white people basically desert and are basically asking to be allowed on Mars, on this black planet, you know? I guess some with, uh, white supremacists would joke and say, a planet of AIDS, you know? Considering that they've written a book about a black planet already, so, um, you know, just interested in all these, um, connections that are, um, you know, they're subtly nuanced between these authors, how they think about non-white people, and how they usher it off into science fiction so you detach that it's not them thinking it. You know, they have to think it in order to write it. But you, you, you know, yeah, I'm not trying to be very bold. I probably didn't say that right, but if you feel me, you know, let me know, let me know. Thank you, and I'll leave my line.
Much obliged, uh, Iri in Louisiana. Um, listener, uh, picked this one, or didn't pick this, I guess it was a group effort because lots of folks said for us to read this one, so. Um, we have done a little bit of sci-fi here at the Cows. I was thinking back, we did nineteen eighty-four, way, way back. That was the first year of the book club, way, way back. And, uh, flipping zombie apocalypse, remember that? Daryl Bang, author was on the program, Negroes Takeover, rarr. Uh, even The Turner Diaries, like, I don't know how it's listed, like, officially, like, in terms of what genre people list that under, but in my view, that could be science fiction too and positing this alternate, uh, reality. But we've done a little bit of sci-fi. I guess generally we do about one fiction book per year, so this might be our one-and-done-for-fiction for two thousand twenty-two. But we do have a record of some sci-fi fiction on the Cows, some overlap greatly, uh, with those works. Uh, I'll share a few of my notes, keep an eye on the switchboard, uh, as well. Uh, let's see, I, uh, I was a little bit taken aback at reading this, as I said, haven't read this book before. It's not required reading, heard about it, had it. Like, it's so embarrassing, I went to get the e-copy because it's a bestseller and they had the big series, so it's easy to obtain if anybody wants a hard copy as we're moving along through all this. I was like, okay, let me, you know, get the books if we're gonna read this one. Already had it. Had it for years, in fact. Uh, you know, we were supposed to read this way back when Dr. Welzing was still with us in the physical form. Uh, I, if I had known, maybe if I had read a little bit of it, uh, I can't even say if I'd watched the series, cause I have seen, uh, an episode and a half of the series, maybe a little bit, nor. Like, they greatly, at least from what I've seen, like, we've read two chapters, we stopped at the end of chapter two, they greatly minimize the racist component of this book. They do say Jap in the series. I've heard Ja, and I mean, maybe they hit you, you know, they gotta, kinda let you get your toe in metaphor, right? They ease you into it. Maybe by the time you get to episode four or five, or season two, then it's chink this, chink that, and rah rah rah, and all the rest of it, maybe. But from what I've seen thus far, it's just been Jap this, Jap that, here and there, not even the way that we've heard in the book, where there's a lot of open, flagrant resentment about all of this, and, oh, the Japs and chinks and slant, and rah rah rah, all the rest of it. That is not there, I haven't got to the slave part either. If I had seen, if the television series was a little more in line with the flagrancy of the white animosity about all this, I probably would have been, we would probably already read this by now. Um, let's see, I, let's see. I'll just run through some of my notes and then I'll hop back and hit the investor as well. So, going all the way back, uh, already told he was married five times, he dedicated this to his wife, and I have no idea where is she at? One, four, on the sequence? Uh, did he, did he change his feelings about the acknowledgement after they got divorced, if they did? Uh, let's see, oh, and he includes in the acknowledgement, "I've made much use of the rise and fall of the Third Reich, A History of Nazi Germany by William L. Shire, Simon &amp; Schuster, nineteen sixty. Hitler, A Study in Tyranny by Alan Bullock, published in nineteen fifty-three. The Goebbels' Diaries, nineteen forty-two to nineteen forty-three, edited and translated by Louis P. Lochner." I thought that was important because, uh, if you do like research of this book, again, published in nineteen sixty-two, important period of time in the world, in the US and in the world. Uh, he makes a point of saying that this is research, like, he's not just talking and, and totally fictitious about the Nazi regime and people that are mentioned and things that happened during World War Two. Like, this is supposed to match actual people, but just changing that, okay, Nazi Germany, the Axis Powers win World War Two, and then what would things look like? But based on actual historical people and events and that sort of thing. So, I thought that was important, and maybe for the folks, Dr. Welzing did say, study Nazi Germany, those are some books to check out. I was even thinking, Mr. Fuller seems like he's read a bit, uh, about Nazi Germany. He might be familiar with some of these texts. Uh, to chapter one, uh, all of this lusting after the Asian female, uh, that starts off in the very beginning of the book with Mr. Chilton, I don't know if that, or at least I haven't seen that in the part of the television series that I've seen thus far. And they have the opposite immediately, so-called Asian male lusting after a white woman. That's every day, all the television shows. This is the other way around. And an Asian female who's married, unobtainable and above you, she's yet above your status, out of your league, as they say. Like, that's not, at least not in the series that I've seen thus far, like, whoa. Uh, and then continue, "The cheap nightclubs with photos of middle-aged blondes holding their nipples between their wrinkled fingers and leering. This is the red light district in San Francisco?" Like, what? What? To have that presented so immediately, like, that is dissimilar to every other mention of blondes that we've had. It's normally Jean Harlow, ah, ah, and what, everything that we heard in the last book. Blonde, virgin, good girls, nice virgins. That's all that we've ever heard about blonde, not bedraggled, wrinkled, old white women that are having to pass themselves off as sex workers to survive? What? Whole different world. And again, that's not in the series that I've seen. Like, if that's there someplace, white women are prostitutes for Asian males or whatever, like, pfft, maybe I'll keep watching then. I stand corrected, I should hush my mouth. Uh, let's see. They talk Aboriginal, so they have all this, uh, fetishism about antiquated American culture and Aboriginal art, a group of vegetable-dyed goat hair rugs, like, what? I guess they're talking about so-called Native Americans, black people, non-white people, uh, where even here, they're presented as some sort of nonsense, like, you know, that they've cobbled together prehistoric times, some bones and what have you. Uh, incidentally, American culture, if they wanna talk about, uh, vegetable-dyed goat hair, today is February third, it is two thousand twenty-two, I already said, "Individuals classified as white brag across the North Ameri, American continent about using a rodent to predict the weather. Call it grass, uh, Groundhog Day." And then have the audacity to say, you got some vegetable-dyed goat hair, get out of here, you and Poscatani Phil, with a top hat and gloves on with a rodent. Continuing, Jean Harlow, already talked about that, the blonde white woman. Uh, let's see, still Mr. Chilton. "Afterward, the couple strode from his store. Chilton stood, hands behind his back, watching the street. Joy, if all business days were like this, but it was more than business, the success of his story. It was a chance to meet a young Japanese couple socially on a basis of acceptance of him as a man rather than him as a yank, or at best a tradesman who sold art objects." Again, what in the world? I mean, what is going on? Totally different universe, like, what? You don't ever hear white people talking about, oh, this has been a wonderful experience. I got to meet some non-white people and they thought of me as a man. What? What? And I was struck by this, isn't this us? This is normally the way we sound. They didn't see me as a nigra. What is it? I'm not black, I'm OJ, or it is not what he said. I'm not a nigger, I'm OJ, remember that what he said? Dr. Welzing used to talk about that all the time. Everything is totally bonkers in this mixed-up universe. And again, I don't recall that being in the television, see, like, they put some, really, Amazon gave us like watered-down content. Uh, let's see. All of this stressing about doing the wrong thing, again, I feel like this is normally the way victims of racism sound, trying to make sure that we, what do they call it, the nonsense code switching? Put some niggardly term on it right, that, that we speak the correct way so that we can be accepted. They don't think of us as a nigra, or a chink, or whatever it is, victim of white supremacy. Normally sounds like us, everything has been totally flip-flopped. Uh, let's see, continues. Oh man, yeah, that's what I said, when he says, uh, the girl's name was Betty. Now, I even thought, now, this is a so-called Asian female, but her name is Betty? Hmm. The girl's name was Betty, now I even thought that this is a so-called Asian female, but her name is Betty, hmm. Uh. His hopes, this is Mr. Chilton, he felt suddenly dizzy, what aspirations bordering on the insane, if not the suicidal did he have, but it was unknown relations between Japanese and. Yanks, although generally it was between a Japanese man and a yank woman. This he quailed at the idea and she was married. He ripped his mind away from the passion of his involuntary thoughts and began busily opening the morning's mail. All again, all of this would normally apply the other way around and even the. They don't even have a name, the dehumanization, it's consistently yanks, even he is talking about himself and other na- or other white people, excuse me, and they. Not people, yanks, every time, yanks. That's what they've done to us, non-human, the dehumanization all the time, how we are called, have been trained, conditioned, right, to refer to ourselves as nigras and coons and. All the rest of it, the training, the brain trashing of white supremacy racism, but just to see it. Reverse and the same thing, him lusting after an Asian female who is again above his station. And him saying that you normally only see this the other way around. Wow, everything that we would generally talk about in the system of white supremacy. Uh, let's see. Why, now the terms, this reminds me of nineteen eighty-four, so this reminds me actually. The Turner Diaries, like this reminds me exactly of the Turner Diaries and these two books were published. Around the same time, it reminds me of Planet of the Apes a lot, I was talking about that one. That book, published, I think Planet of the Apes was published in nineteen sixty-four. I believe in the film, the first one came out about two years later, but they were published at the same time. Planet of the Apes, published by a white man born in France, these are like exactly the same books. Planet of the, except as opposed to Nazi Germany and the no count, Japs have taken over. The Apes have taken over, which with the uh Japs and the Apes, it's the same thing. With the Turner Diaries, it's the same thing. Same gripes and complaints even. About white women being sullied. Raped by nigras, that's why I said we might have to wait on this one to see if the rapes do come up, the raping nigra. We'll have to wait and see, you only got two chapters in. Uh, let's see. The name calling, oh my goodness, he continues, so we've got Japs this and Jap that, blah, 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 now we got. Oh, we switched characters, so this is now where Mr. Frank, so we got three characters in the first portion that we read, Mr. Chilton, one character, bam, now Mr. Frank. Uh, Mr. Frank, Frank, Frank. Uh, he says uh. Now he would have to appear at the Laborers' Justification Commission for revision of his work category. Since he had never been able to make out Wyndham Matson's relationship to the Penox. The puppet white government at Sacramento. He could just not fathom his ex-employer's power to sway the real authorities, the Japanese. Uh, now, all of this, I guess, is set up, they lose, so now the Japanese, they're in control of the western chunk of the US. Uh, and so I guess again, we got another white man who's done the wrong thing and is worried about using his title at work and he might have to be shipped off and doled out to work. Uh, someplace else and these white people might have a say, some sort of say in at the Penox, these are the. White people that have been, I guess, given some low-level position to help run uh the Japanese Axis uh Powers, Japanese German Alliance, they get some low-level job and the. Western chunk uh to run things while the Japanese are not there directly, similar to the system of white supremacy, right? Buffers, Mr. Fuller's term, or however you want to reference it, uh, we have lots of creative name-calling ways of addressing these folks, the boui- uh, boulay and all the rest of that. Penox, he calls them, but same dynamic, they're not in charge, except here, the people that have the power are the Japanese, he understands that. Uh, let's see. W.C. Fields, again, it's a lot of, Dr. Kowalkin was just with us and he talked a lot about nostalgia, having. Individuals classified as white yearning for like bygone days and uh older times when white supremacy racism was maybe a bit more. Uh, free from threat, concerns about white genetic annihilation were not as prominent or what have you. There's a lot of that in this book, this is an old, again, published in nineteen sixty-two, but there's a lot of that. In this book, it's like even double nostalgia to have to make the television series. Uh, so recently, as though it's harkening back to this era when this book was published, and then within the book, it's harkening back. Jean Harlow, she was like a star of the nineteen thirties. W.C. Fields, these are like really old Hollywood, like Woody Allen's era when he was going to the movies and all that, nineteen thirties, nineteen forties, like World War Two and before. They're talking about the glory days, so they're talking about before World War Two in this book, so this is harkening back to a real, like the Scottsboro Boys uh type era. Lynch and nigras type era, that's what they're talking about. Make it plain. Uh, let's see. Negroid, make it plain, that's what I mean, that's back-to-back books where I said that, the use of this term negroid, even in nineteen sixty-two. Like, I don't know, negroid? At that time, you had uh the Nation of Islam, not like literally, at that exact moment that this book was published. You had black people saying, don't call me colored. I am black. Stop calling me colored, call me black, black is, that is happening like literally. At this moment, maybe a little bit early for Black is Beautiful, but definitely, call me black. Uh, Elijah Muhammad, Malcolm X, and that's just gonna be picked up and rolling over the time period, but negroid? And I said the same thing in the last book, even using a term like that is same thing I said, harkening back to. We can just lynch dr- lynch and castrate a nigra, and that was said explicitly in the last book, I'm just waiting, it might be in this one too. Uh, let's see. Folks, so interesting, so we get a the uh description, I believe this is still Mr. Frank. Uh, who's speaking here, he gives, yep, so he gives his, his uh. Contrast between the Japanese and the German, he says. By the time the Japs got their space spaceship off the ground, the Germans would have the entire solar system sewed up tight. Back in the quaint old history book days, the German, Germans had missed out while the rest of Europe put the final touches on their colonial empires, however. Frank reflected, they were not going to be last this time, they had learned. Now, I mean, all of this paragraph, fascinating, and again, I don't think this is brought out in the television series. Um, the one, all of this reverence for the Germans, maybe we haven't heard enough, but there doesn't seem to be as much. Disgust with the Germans, they're white, they're intel- it's the same thread that we normally hear. White intelligence, that white Germanic efficiency is something to be proud of, something to aspire to as fellow white brethren. The Japs, on the other hand, they're ignorant, backwards, and still in the jungles and they're not gonna have any sort of spaceship. And even if they do. Get some sort of space technology, it'll be inferior. They are technologically deficient in comparing to, in comparison to the white Germans, now even thinking about that fifty years on, har, har, har. Uh, but all of this, the same pattern, uh, yeah, they may be in a position of power right now, but they're no count, ignorant and lame. The white Germans, on the other hand, though, yeah, that's, that's what we're supposed to be as white men and white women. Uh, let's see. The discussion of Africa, wow. And then even the whole start of this paragraph where he says, Christ on the crapper, he thought, what a metaphor. Africa for the ghosts of dead tribes that were wiped out to make a land of what? Who knew? Maybe even the master architects in Berlin did not know. Bunch of automatons, invisible man, man not, black people are just machines, building and toiling away. Uh, and then he goes on, he says, uh, and it even reminded me Lothrup Stotter. Uh, white world, uh. The rising tide of color against white world supremacy, which we read in the book club, Dr. Welzing recommended that book on the same final Welzing Institute lecture. Uh, where he gives Africa no consideration at all, they're no threat. They're just, you know, ignorant, no count, Neanderthals, you know, they're not involved in space travel or anything else, like, ugh, just. A total waste, that sort of ideas presented about black people, the continent, black people in general, all the time. Nobel uh scientist, Dr. Watson said the same thing, we're wasting all this time in Africa, like, oh, it's just, what are you gonna do? They're morons. Uh, let's see. Continues. We can, we can deplore the radio, the voice of the little yellow bellies from Tokyo were saying, God, Frank thought, and we called them monkeys, these civilized bandy-legged shrimps who would no more set up gas ovens. Than would melt their wives into sealing wax, and I thought this was important because again, he's taught, he's making a contrast between the Germans and saying, hey, the Japanese, they're not about. You know, baking folks and putting them in an oven and gotta kill, they're not, they're not even thinking about that, you know, and it's still all of the not humans. We called them monkeys, bandy-legged shrimps, not humans. Uh, let's see. Uh, 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 let's see. The billion chemical heaps in Africa that were not, that were now not even corpses. Like, and all of this is in the context of him bringing up the German experiments. And the continent, which again, did happen, that's not, you know, the, all of this is historically based. On him talking, I guess, about them continuing maybe these experiments and killing off huge number, billions uh of black people on the continent? Is this in the Amazon series? Maybe I need to keep watching to see if that's there, them killing off black people on the continent? And again, this book was published in nineteen sixty-two when so-called anti-colonialism, like I think this would have been in the middle of the, the conflict in Algiers. Uh, ongoing. Same thing I said about Planet of the Apes. Uh, let's see. That's chapter one, see what I had on chapter two. See if I get any notes, uh, get my notes in there and then I'll check, see if folks have any thoughts on chapter two, I don't know if folks uh. Have their book or following along or what have you, but this is a pretty interesting read, Dr. Welzing did say study Nazi Germany, I would say, hey, any. Book that white people are chatting about for sixty years and then making television shows fifty years after the book is. Published and it's talking this explicitly about white supremacy racism? I would be observant. Anywho, let's see, chapter two, I'll share a few notes, uh, and then we'll take off there as well. Uh, let's see. They submit, I had to double-take, so they said, the flight. From Stockholm, Sweden. To San Francisco is only forty-five minutes. What sort of technology do they have? Like what? I don't know if you can't fly from San Francisco to Seattle uh in forty-five minutes, you can't fly from San Francisco to Los Angeles. Uh, in forty-five minutes, much less to Stockholm even now, like what sort of technology do they imagine? The Jetsons? Like what, what is going on here? Uh, let's see. Uh, so chapter two. So we have. So-called Asian male, Mr. Takomi, he's meeting with Mr. Ramsey, white man, trying to discuss getting a gift of some sort, lots of gift-getting, first portion of text that we read. Uh, so they're having this exchange, oh man, Welzing moment, uh, so they're having the exchange, uh, and he says, uh. Let me back up to give the full context, so. Mr. Takami says, I've been consulting the oracle, Mr. Takami, as Miss Afreakian, I even have to pause on that name, like if this is a non-white person because in the book. Philip K. Dick has it M-I-S-S, not M-R-S. Or even M-S, so it's kind of infantilized, M-I-S-S is like a younger person, a minor, Miss Afreakian? That is an interesting name, Afreakian, I did mention Rick James before, maybe that's just on my mind. Uh, treated herself with the tape recorder, rece- reseeded herself with the tape recorder, you understand that? Mr. Baines, who as you know, is arriving shortly in person, holds to the Nordic ideology regarding so-called Oriental culture. I couldn't make the effort to dazzle him into a better comprehension with authentic works of Chinese scroll art or ceramics of our. Tokugawa period, but it is not our job to convert. I see, Mr. Ramsey said, his Caucasian face twisted with painful concentration, let me pause as well, the narration on this? I don't know if people were with us ten years ago when we read the Turner Diaries, it is in the archives, the entire series. That book also features a white narrator doing a lot of imitating non-white people. And I feel that that's a part of the racism of the book, probably a part of the appeal of the book. To have a white author doing all of this negro dialect and non-white dialect in that book, but that happens here as well. Uh, that was something that stood out to me in a major uh factor during the first component of the reading. Uh, continuing, uh, so. Uh, therefore, we will cater to his prejudice and graft a priceless American artifact to him and said. Yes, you, sir, are of American ancestry, although you have gone to the trouble of darkening your skin color, he scrutinized Mr. Ramsey. A tan achieved by a sun lamp, Mr. Ramsey murmured, for merely acquiring vitamin D. But his expression of humiliation gave him away. I assure you that I retain authentic roots with, Mr. Ramsey stumbled over the words, I have not cut off all ties with. Native ethnic patterns. Wow, one Doc Welzing moment, she said, she. Talked about this very series, why are we supposed to read it a long time ago, generally, white people are not like. Guilty or humiliated or shamed about tanning, that's ju- in fact, the book we just read, Lucky. She, one, complained about her pale skin throughout the book. Two, she mentioned that the elite, more powerful whites who were cooler than she. Part of their coolness, they would brag and show off that on their spring vacations, they went to Florida and got a tan and would come back and. Ooh, be all golden, while she was pale, melanin deficient, that's what we just read. Not, oh, I gotta be all humiliated and make excuses about why I'm getting a tan. I'm not doing this tan to try to be like you, non-white people, I'm not ashamed of my complexion. That's normally us, non-white people, victims of white supremacy worldwide, all non-white people being ashamed of having melanin and let me get some bleaching cream and stay out of the sun and all the rest of it. Even this book, I would submit, knowing how things would change if we were no longer in a system of white supremacy racism. How they would be responding psychologically and all the rest, white people are not ignorant about racism, even Philip K. Dick. And I think to really appreciate this book, you would have to get all of this. Let's see. Oh, the sit- so, he gets, he wants Mr. Ramsey to pick out this gift, you, you're a white, you're a yank, right, you know yank culture, he says, this is why. A, he was gonna call him a yank, he lingered over his choice of terms, why you, Mr. Ramsey, who are, are, shall I say. Native-born are required, obviously, we do the best we can, they said, Mr. Ramsey was hurt and angry and all the rest of it, he was about to call, that is the system of white supremacy. Mr. Dick, he knows normally would be, I'm a white person and I'm talking to this nigra and I'm trying to pretend and struggle, alright, I'm not gonna call you a nigra right now. See, I'm trying to learn about you, nigra, so you being a, uh, uh, what's, uh, 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 what is it, uh, uh. Colored, yeah, a colored person, yeah, that's what it is, you being a colored person, you know about your uh color, yeah, that sort of thing. That's normally what it is, not, uh, yeah, a cracker, uh, native-born white person, yeah. Let's see. IG Farben, I believe that is the chemical company that made the. Gas uh during World War Two uh that was used to kill off lots of folks, incidentally, I think that company. Uh, through some name changes and continuing, I think they might even be involved with uh Dow Chemicals and Agent Orange that continued all throughout the history of white war technology and. Technology to kill and minge, I'll have to double-check that as we. I'll have to double-check that as we proceed, but IG Farben is legit, and they did manufacture instruments to kill, uh, during World War II's. Uh, let's see. Oh, and he talks about how, uh, for years, the Pacific had been trying to get basic assistance in the synthetics field from the Reich, however, the big German chemical cartels, IG Farben in particular, had harbored their patents, had in fact created a world monopoly in plastics, especially in the development of polyesters. One, again, we're not quite equal in all of this, which was true even in World War II, like, we're whites, we're supposed to dominate, so even you Japs and chinks, we're not even, you know, on board with you, even so, we're supposed to pretend that we're cooperating and partners in all of this, uh, and so, we're gonna hide our technology, and then, two, we just read, uh, Countdown, and talking about all of these plastics and synthetics, uh, materials that are literally killing humans and animals on the planet and reducing, uh, sperm counts, imperiling the population ability to conceive, particularly in European areas like Germany and here. Lots of plastics, uh, mentioned here as well, let's see. All of this, where, this is, uh, the white man, Mr. Chilton, uh, so, he gets a so-called Asian person to paddle him along to his next destination, he says, "In fact, the uproar of radios, traffic noise and signs, and people lulled him, they blotted out his inner worries, and it was pleasurable to be paddled along by another human being, to feel the straining muscles of the chink transmitted in the form of regular vibrations, a sort of relaxing machine." There it is, again, uh, invisible man, color monitors, children reflected, to be pulled instead of having to pull, and to have, if for a moment, higher place. I mean, ah, it is so staggering, that's what I said, I don't, if that's in the series, this consistent sense of disgust and anger with non-white people, being in a position of power over white people, that being a major problem for white people and something that they are talking about and disgusted about all the time, and it's even fascinating, Amazon produced this series basically at this moment, middle of the Trump presidency, and we're mad at China, and mad at these yellow people, and now mad at the Chinese virus and all the rest of it, like, hmm. Fascinating all the way through, I ta- and again, "The masters of anti-Asian violence are classified as white." This book published right on the eve of US official involvement in Vietnam. Uh, let's see. Oh, I'll finish with the chapters, the Negroes finally, are you serious? He says, "Then he might see a slave. German or South ships docked at the port of San Francisco all the time, and blacks occasionally were allowed off for short intervals, always in groups of fewer than three, and they could not be out after nightfall, even under Pacific law, they had to obey the curfew." That's what I said, it seems like there could be some negro raping here too, which is all over Turner Diaries, which I said, this book reminds me of hugely, and, uh, Melanin Apocalypse, which also has negro raping, uh, in the book we just read, obviously, uh, but even Nazi Germany can win and we still got negro rapists, then they gotta be enslaved and locked down under curfew? Like, are you serious? Geez, man, uh, let's see. And he, he talks in detail about the niggers who don't count for anything, like, oh, I could carry my bag and walk, but to have a nigger see me carrying my bag, like, oh, God, he said, that couldn't, that can't happen. Even if I missed my appointment, it was out of the question to let a slave see him carrying something, he had to be quite careful of that, a mistake of that kind would cost him dearly, he would never have place of any sort again among those who saw, like, wow, the nigger counts for that little? I guess that must be the case now, some things don't change, like, it's just certain things you cannot be beneath a nigger, like, oh my God, or even allow a nigger to see such things. Uh, let's see. Oh, and see, we got it again, he's sitting there, this is right after that, all that about the nigger, he says, "And those great glossy magazines printed in Munich and circulated around to all the libraries and newsstands, and one could see the full-page color pictures for oneself, the blue-eyed, blond-haired, Aryan settlers who now industrially tilled, culled, plowed, and so forth, and vast gringle of the world, the Ukraine." Really? I didn't know that. Uh, but that's normally the way that we hear white people talked about it, that's what I would expect, even though these Germans, Nazis, we fought against them too, right? It wasn't just the Japanese, but they're not our enemies, they, those are our white brothers, we can scuffle and patch things up, the Japs, we're supposed to dominate them forever, no matter what, they're not in charge, they're not supposed to be in charge, not of a white man, certainly not a nigger, ugh. Uh, he says, "But Africa, they had simply let their enthusiasm get the better of them, and you had to admire that, although the more thoughtful advice would have cautioned them to prepare, let it wait a bit until the instance Project Farmland had been completed." It sounds like apparently they did not get it completed, and so they just said, "Forget it, we'll kill the niggers," and that was that. In the same paragraph, he says, "The Mediterranean Sea bottled up, drained, made into tillable farmland, though the use of, through the use of atomic power. What daring, the Germans! How the Sniggerers!" Now, he spells that S-N-I-G-G-E-R-E-R-S. Sniggerers is a word, for sure. Uh, give out the definition again, real quick, uh, oh, it didn't do it, I double-clicked it before, I guess, oh, there it is, Snigger, "To laugh in a half-suppressed, typically scornful way." It just so happens that nigger is right in the middle of Snigger, you old slick Philip, Philip K. Dick, okay, so the Sniggerers had just been earlier, yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, let's see. He says, and that's why I thought he was being tongue-in-cheek about it, he comes later, 'cause I'm assuming that they just killed the black people. He says, "Rosenberg's well-known, powerful pamphlet issued in nineteen fifty-eight, the world had first shown up then. As to the final solution of the African problem, we have almost achieved our objective, unfortunately, however, still had taken two hundred years to dispose of the American aborigines, and Germany had almost done it in Africa in fifteen years." That's what I said, that's what it sounds like, right? They just killed all the black people. Geez, is that in the television series? Did Amazon remake that? This book was published in the middle of the so-called anti-colonial struggle on the continent, the Mao-Mao's, Yomokenyata. I was about to say, uh, the Congo, forgetting his name, it'll come to me in a second, hopefully it'll come to me, uh, in a second, assassinated early nineteen sixties, um, Patrice Lumumba, there we go. He was already assassinated by the time this book was published, but I mean, all that was taking place, Nelson Mandela and, uh, Nkontowe Siswe, all of that is going on when this book was published, kill them all, which is what they were doing in South Africa, they came to the same conclusion, kill them all. Is this in the Amazon series? Does anybody know? Uh, he says, duh, 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 duh. He says, "They, they are, let's face it, Orientals, yellow people, we whites have to bow to them because they hold the power." Excuse me, got something caught my folk. "They are, let's face it, Orientals, yellow people, we whites have to bow to them because they hold the power, but we watch Germany, we see what can be done where whites have conquered, and it's quite different." It's so flag- if I had known how flagrant this book was about white supremacy racism, we would have read it sooner. If I had, in watching the television show, if it was as flagrantly presented, we would have read this sooner. Uh, let's see, anything else I wanna get, um, sees a black person, treats him with contempt, yeah, eh, uh, 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 uh. And yeah, that's all of chapter two. Uh, if other folks have commentary, just make notes, we will go ahead and get to the second audio installment, and then if you have other comments, thoughts to share, you just press star six one, and we will nav you on the line. Uh, let's see. There were lots of folks who were interested in reading the book, so I'd said, hopefully, folks will have thoughts to share. I was not, like, overjoyed in reading this, 'cause I didn't really think people would be excited about reading this book, and it's way less fun for me to read a book if I'm gonna be the only one that's actually commenting on the text that we're reading and not things that are, you know, unrelated, and the TV show, and that type of thing, I would rather just pick a book that I'd be excited about, as opposed to picking something that other people say they're excited about, and then they don't comment or participate. I can just pick my own, that way I can be excited to talk about it myself. Anywho, we will push off to the second audio installment, Philip K. Dick's, wow, it reminds me so much of The Turner Diaries, uh, we have seen this before, Turner Diaries, Planet of the Apes, Melanin Apocalypse, like, think of any time they present some sort of wacky universe where white people are not dominating and lynching, and this will have some overtones. Context of White Supremacy, Philip K. Dick, audio segment number two.
Chapter three. At sunset, glancing up, Juliana Frink saw the dot of light in the sky shoot in an arc, disappear to the west. "One of those Nazi rocket ships," she said to herself, "flying to the coast, full of big shots, and here I am, down below." She waved, although the rocket ship, of course, had already gone. Shadows advancing from the Rockies, blue peaks turning to night, a flock of slow birds, migratory, made their way parallel with the mountains. Here and there, a car turned its headlights on, she saw the twin dots along the highway, lights too of a gas station, houses. For months now, she had been living here in Cannon City, Colorado, she was a judo instructor. Her workday had ended, and she was preparing to take a shower, she felt tired, all the showers were in use by customers of Ray's Gym, so she had been standing, waiting outdoors in the coolness, enjoying the smell of mountain air, the quiet. All she heard now was the faint murmur from the hamburger stand down the road by the highway's edge. Two huge diesel trucks had parked, and the drivers, in the gloom, could be seen moving about, putting on their leather jackets before entering the hamburger stand. She thought, "Didn't Diesel throw himself out the window of the stateroom, commit suicide by drowning himself on an ocean voyage? Maybe I ought to do that, but here there was no ocean. But there is always a way, like in Shakespeare, a pin stuck through one shirt front, and goodbye, Frink. The girl who need not fear, marauding homeless from the desert, walks upright in consciousness of many pinched nerve possibilities, ingrizzled, salivating adversary. Death instead by, say, sniffing car exhaust in highway town, perhaps through long hollow straw. Learned that, she thought, from Japanese. Imbibe placid attitude toward mortality, along with money-making judo. How to kill, how to die, yang and yin. But that's behind now, this is Protestant land. It was a good thing to see the Nazi rockets go by overhead and not stop, not take any interest of any sort in Cannon City, Colorado, nor in Utah or Wyoming or the eastern part of Nevada, none of the open, empty desert states or pasture states. 'We have no value,' she said to herself. 'We can live out our tiny lives, if we want to, if it matters to us.' From one of the showers, the noise of a door unlocking, a shape, large Miss Davis, finished with her shower, dressed, purse under her arm. "'Oh, were you waiting, Mrs. Frink? I'm sorry.'" "'It's all right,' Juliana said. 'You know, Mrs. Frink, I've gotten so much out of judo, even more than out of Zen, I wanted to tell you.'" "'Slim your hips the Zen way,' Juliana said. 'Lose pounds through painless satori.'" "'I'm sorry, Miss Davis, I'm wool gathering.'" Miss Davis said, "'Did they hurt you much?' "'Who?' "'The Japs, before you learn to defend yourself.'" "'It was dreadful,' Juliana said. 'You've never been out there on the coast, where they are.'" "'I've never been outside of Colorado,' Miss Davis said, her voice fluttering timidly. "'It could happen here,' Juliana said. 'They might decide to occupy this region too.'" "'Not this late.'" "'You never know what they're going to do,' Juliana said. 'They hide their real thoughts.'" "'What did they make you do?' Miss Davis, hugging her purse against her body with both arms, moved closer in the evening darkness to hear. "'Everything,' Juliana said." "'Oh, God, I'd fight,' Miss Davis said." Juliana excused herself and walked to the vacant shower, someone else was approaching it with a towel over her arm. Later, she sat in a booth at Tasty Charlie's broiled hamburgers, listlessly reading the menu. The jukebox played some hillbilly tune, steel guitar and a motion-choked moaning, the air was heavy with grease smoke, and yet the place was warm and bright, and it cheered her, the presence of the truck drivers at the counter, the waitress, the big Irish fry cook in his white jacket at the register making a change. Seeing her, Charlie approached to wait on her himself. Grinning, he drawled, "Missy want tea now?" "'Coffee,' Juliana said, enduring the fry cook's relentless humor. "'Ah, so,' Charlie said, nodding.'" "'And the hot steak sandwich with gravy.'" "'Not have bull rats' nest soup, or maybe goat brains fried in olive oil.'" A couple of the truck drivers, turning on their stools, grinned along with the gag, too, and in addition, they took pleasure in noticing how attractive she was, even lacking the fry cook's kidding, she would have found the truck drivers scrutinizing her. The monks of active judo had given her unusual muscle tone, she knew how well she held herself and what it did for her figure. "It all has to do with the shoulder muscles," she thought as she met their gaze, "dancers do it too, it has nothing to do with size. Send your wives around to the gym and we'll teach them, and you'll be so much more content in life." "'Stay away from her,' the fry cook warned the truck drivers with a wink, "'She'll throw you on your can.'" She said to the younger of the truck drivers, "'Where are you in from?' "'Missouri,' both men said. "'Are you from the United States?' she asked. "'I am,' the older man said. "'Philadelphia, got three kids there, the oldest is eleven.'" "'Listen,' Juliana said, "'is it easy to get a good job back there?' The younger truck driver said, "'Sure, if you have the right, the color skin.'" He himself had a dark, brooding face with curly, black hair, his expression had become set and bitter. "'He's a wop,' the older man said. "'Well,' Juliana said, "'didn't Italy win the war?' She smiled at the young truck driver, but he did not smile back. Instead, his somber eyes glowed even more intensely, and suddenly he turned away. "'I'm sorry,' she thought, but she said nothing. 'I can't save you or anybody else from being dark.'" She thought of Frank, "I wonder if he's dead yet," said the wrong thing, spoke out of line. "No," she thought, "'somehow he likes Japs. Maybe he identifies with them because they're ugly.'" She had always told Frank that he was ugly, large pores, big nose, her own skin was finely knit, unusually so. "'Did he fall dead without me? A fink is a finch, a form of bird, and they say birds die.'" "'Are you going back on the road tonight?' she asked the young Italian truck driver. "'Tomorrow.'" "'If you're not happy in the US, why don't you cross over permanently?' she said. "'I've been living in the Rockies for a long time, and it isn't so bad. I lived on the coast in San Francisco, they have the skin thing there, too.'" Glancing briefly at her as he sat hunched at the counter, the young Italian said, "'Lady, it's bad enough that I have to spend one day or one night in a town alike this. Live here? Christ, if I could get any other kind of a job, and not have to be on the road eating my meals in places like this.'" Noticing that the fry cook was red, he ceased speaking and began to drink his coffee. The older truck driver said to him, "'Joe, you're a snob.'" "'You could live in Denver,' Juliana said. "'It's nicer up there.'" "'I know you East Americans,' she thought. "'You like the big time, dreaming your big schemes. This is just the sixth to you, the Rockies. Nothing has happened here since before the war. Retired old people, farmers, the stupid, slow, poor, and all the smart boys have flocked east to New York, crossing the border legally or illegally.'" Because, she thought, that's where the money is, the big industrial money, the expansion. "German investment has done a lot, it didn't take long for them to build the US back up." The fry cook said in a hoarse, angry voice, "'Buddy, I'm not a Jew lover, but I've seen some of those Jew refugees fleeing your US in forty-nine, and you can have your US. If there's a lot of building back there and a lot of loose, easy money, it's because they stole it from those Jews when they kicked them out of New York, that goddamn Nazi Nuremberg law. I lived in Boston when I was a kid, and I got no special use for Jews, but I never thought I'd see that Nazi racial law get passed in the US, even if we did lose the war. I'm surprised you aren't in the US Armed Forces, getting ready to invade some little South American republic as a front for the Germans, so they can push the Japanese back a little bit more.'" Both truck drivers were on their feet, their faces stark. The older man picked up a ketchup bottle from the counter and held it upright by the neck. The fry cook, without turning his back to the two men, reached behind him until his fingers touched one of his meat forks, he brought the fork out and held it. Juliana said, "Denver's-" Juliana said, "Denver's getting one of those heat-resistant runways the Lufthansa rockets can land there." None of the three men moved or spoke. The other customers sat silently. Finally, the fry cook said, "One flew over around sundown." "It wasn't going to Denver," Juliana said. "It was going west to the coast." By degrees, the two truck drivers reseated themselves. The older man mumbled, "I always forget, there's a little yellow out here." The fry cook said, "No Japs kill Jews in the war or after, no Japs build ovens." "Too bad they didn't," the older truck driver said, but picking up his coffee cup, he resumed eating. "Yellow," Juliana thought. "Yes, I suppose it's true, we love the Japs out here." "Where are you staying?" she asked, speaking to the young truck driver, Joe. "Overnight." "I don't know," he answered. "I just got out of the truck to come in here. I don't like this whole state. Maybe I'll sleep in the truck." "The Honeybee Motel isn't too bad," the fry cook said. "Okay," the young truck driver said. "Maybe I'll stay there, if they don't mind me being Italian." He had a definite accent, although he tried to hide it. Watching him, Juliana thought, "It's idealism that makes him that bitter, asking too much out of life, always moving on, restless and gripped. I'm the same way, I couldn't stay on the West Coast, and eventually I won't be able to stand it here. Weren't the old timers like that?" But, she thought, now the frontier isn't here, it's the other planets. She thought, "He and I could sign up for one of those colonizing rocket ships, but the Germans would disbar him because of his skin and me because of my dark hair, those pale, skinny Nordic SS fairies in those training castles in Bavaria. This guy, Joe whatever, hasn't even got the right expression on his face. He should have that cold but somehow enthusiastic look, as if he believed in nothing and yet somehow had absolute faith. Yes, that's how they are. They're not idealists like Joe and me, they're cynics with utter faith. It's a sort of brain defect, like a lobotomy, that maiming those German psychiatrists do as a poor substitute for psychotherapy. Their trouble, she decided, is with sex. They did something foul with it back in the thirties, and it has gotten worse. Hitler started it with his, what was she, his sister, aunt, niece? And his family was inbred already, his mother and father were cousins. They're all committing incest, going back to the original sin of lusting for their own mothers. That's why they, those elite SS fairies, have that angelic simper, that blonde, baby-like innocence. They're saving themselves for Mama, or for each other. And who is Mama for them, she wondered? The leader, Herr Bormann, who is supposed to be dying? Or the sick one? Old Adolf, supposed to be in a sanitarium somewhere, living out his life of senile paresis, syphilis of the brain, dating back to his poor days as a bum in Vienna, long black coat, dirty underwear, flop houses. Obviously, it was God's sardonic vengeance, right out of some silent movie, that awful man struck down by an internal filth, the historic plague for man's wickedness. And the horrible part was that the present-day German Empire was a product of that brain, first a political party, then a nation, then half the world. And the Nazis themselves had diagnosed it, identified it, that quack herbal medicine man who had treated Hitler, that Dr. Morel who had dosed Hitler with a patent medicine called Dr. Kleister's Anti-Gas Pills. He had originally been a specialist in venereal disease. The entire world knew it, and yet the leader's gavel was still sacred, still holy writ. The views had infected a civilization by now, and, like evil spores, the blind, blond Nazi queens were swishing out from Earth to the other planets, spreading the contamination. What you get for incest, madness, blindness, death. "Brrr," she shook herself. "Charlie," she called to the fry cook, "you about ready with my order?" She felt absolutely alone. Getting to her feet, she walked to the counter and seated herself by the register. No one noticed her except the young Italian truck driver, his dark eyes were fixed on her. Joe, his name was. "Joe what?" she wondered. Closer to him now, she saw that he was not as young as she had thought. Hard to tell, the intensity all around him disturbed her judgment. Continually, he drew his hand through his hair, combing it back with crooked, rigid fingers. "There's something special about this man," she thought. "He breathes death." It upset her, and yet attracted her. Now the older truck driver inclined his head and whispered to him. Then they both scrutinized her, this time with a look that was not the ordinary male interest. "Miss," the older one said. Both men were quite tense now. "Do you know what this is?" He held up a flat, white box, not too large. "Yes," Juliana said. "Nylon stockings, synthetic fiber made only by the great cartel of New York, IG Farben, very rare and expensive." "You gotta hand it to the Germans, monopoly's not a bad idea." The older truck driver passed the box to his companion, who pushed it with his elbow along the counter toward her. "You have a car?" the young Italian asked her, sipping his coffee. From the kitchen Charlie appeared, he had her plate. "You could drive me to this place." The wild, strong eyes still studied her, and she became increasingly nervous and yet increasingly transfixed. "This motel, or wherever I'm supposed to stay tonight, isn't that so?" "Yes," she said. "I have a car, an old Studebaker." The fry cook glanced from her to the young truck driver, and then set her plate before her at the counter. The loudspeaker at the end of the aisle said, "Achtung, mein Damen und Herren." In his seat, Mr. Baines started, opened his eyes. Through the window to his right he could see, far below, the brown and green of land, and then blue, the Pacific. The rocket, he realized, had begun its long, slow descent. In German first, then Japanese, and at last English, the loudspeaker explained that no one was to smoke or to untie himself from his padded seat. The descent, it explained, would take eight minutes. The retrojets started then, so suddenly and loudly, shaking the ship so violently that a number of passengers gasped. Mr. Baines smiled, and in the aisle seat across from him, another passenger, a younger man with close-cropped blond hair, also smiled. "Sie füchten das?" the young man began, but Mr. Baines said at once in English. "I'm sorry, I don't speak German." The young German gazed at him questioningly, and so he said the same thing in German. "No, Chumman," the young German said, amazed in accented English. "I am Swedish," Baines said. "You embark the Tempelhof?" "Yes, I was in Germany on business. My business carries me to a number of countries." Clearly, the young German could not believe that anyone in the modern world, anyone who had international business dealings and rode, could afford to ride on the latest Lufthansa rocket, could or would not speak German. To Baines, he said, "What line are you in, mein Herr?" "Plastics, polysters, resins, ersatz, industrial uses. You see, no consumer's commodities." "Sweden has a plastics industry?" disbelief. "Yes, a very good one. If you will give me your name, I will have a firm brochure mailed to you." Mr. Baines brought out his pen and pad. "Never mind, it would be wasted on me. I am an artist, not a commercial man, no offense. Possibly you have seen my oeuvre while on the continent, Alex Lotzer." He waited. "Afraid I do not care for modern art," Mr. Baines said. "I like the old pre-war Cubists and abstractionists. I like a picture to mean something, not merely to represent the ideal." He turned away. "But that's the task of art," Lotzer said. "To advance the spirituality of man over the zentual. Your abstract art represented a period of spiritual decadence, of spiritual chaos, due to the disintegration of society, the old plutocracy, the Jewish and capitalist millionaires, the international set that supported the decadent art. Those times are over, art has to go on, it can't stay still." Baines nodded, gazing out the window. "Have you been to the Pacific before?" Lotzer asked. "Several times." "Not I. There is an exhibition in San Francisco of my oeuvre, arranged by Dr. Goebbels' office with the Japanese authorities, a cultural exchange to promote understanding and goodwill. We must ease tensions between the East and West, don't you think? We must have more communication, and art can do that." Baines nodded. Below, beyond the ring of fire from the rocket, the city of San Francisco and the bay could now be seen. "Where does one eat in San Francisco?" Lotzer was saying. "I have reservations at the Palace Hotel, but my understanding is that one can find good food in the international section, such as the Chinatown." "True," Baines said. "Our prices high in San Francisco? I am out of pocket for this trip. The ministry is very frugal." Lotzer laughed. "Depends on the exchange rate you can manage. I presume you're carrying Reichsbank drafts. I suggest you go to the Bank of Tokyo on Sampson Street and exchange there." "Danke, sir," Lotzer said. "I would have done it at the hotel." The rocket had almost reached the ground. Now Baines could see the airfield itself, hangars, parking lots, the autobahn from the city, the houses. Very lovely view, he thought, mountains and water, and a few bits of fog drifting in at the Golden Gate. "What is that enormous structure below?" Lotzer asked. "It is half-finished, open at one side." "A spaceport? The Nipponese have no spacecraft," I thought. With a smile, Baines said, "That's Golden Poppy Stadium, the baseball park." Lotzer laughed. "Yes, they love baseball, incredible. They have begun work on that great structure for a pastime, an idle, time-wasting sport." Interrupting, Baines said, "It is finished, that's its permanent shape, open on one side, a new architectural design, they are very proud of it." "It looks," Lotzer said, gazing down, "as if it was designed by a Jew." Baines regarded the man for a time. He felt strongly for a moment, the unbalanced quality, the psychotic streak in the German mind. Did Lotzer actually mean what he said? Was it a truly spontaneous remark? "I hope we will see one another later on in San Francisco," Lotzer said as the rocket touched the ground. "I will be at loose ends without a countryman to talk to." "I'm not a countryman of yours," Baines said. "Oh, yes, that's so, but racially, you're quite close, for all intents and purposes the same." Lotzer began to stir around in his seat, getting ready to unfasten the elaborate belts. "Am I racially kin to this man?" Baines wondered. "So closely, so that for all intents and purposes, it is the same? Then it is in me, too, the psychotic streak, a psychotic world we live in, the madmen are in power. How long have we known this, faced this, and how many of us do know it? Not Lotzer. Perhaps if you know you are insane, then you are not insane, or you are becoming sane, finally, waking up. I suppose only a few are aware of all this, isolated persons here and there, but the broad masses, what do they think? All these hundreds of thousands in this city here, do they imagine that they live in a sane world? Or do they guess, glimpse the truth? But, he thought, what does it mean, insane? A legal definition. What do I mean? I feel it, see it, but what is it? He thought, "It is something they do, something they are. It is their unconsciousness, their lack of knowledge about others. They're not being aware of what they do to others, the destruction they have caused and are causing." "No," he thought, "that isn't it. I don't know, I sense it, intuit it, but..." "They are purposely cruel, is that it? No." "God," he thought, "I can't find it, make it clear. Do they ignore parts of reality? Yes. But it is more, it is their plans, yes, their plans, the conquering of the planets, something frenzied and demented, as was their conquering of Africa, and before that, Europe and Asia. Their view, it is cosmic, not of a man here, a child there, but an abstraction, race, land, Volk, Land, Blut, air. Not of honorable men, but of air itself, honor. The abstract is real, the actual is invisible to them. Die Gute, but not good men, this good man. It is their sense of space and time. They see through the here, the now, into the vast, black, deep, beyond, the unchanging, and that is fatal to life. Because eventually there will be no life. There was once only the dust particles in space, the hot hydrogen gases, nothing more, and it will come again. This is an interval, ein Augensblick. The cosmic process is hurrying on, crushing life back into the granite and methane. The wheel turns for all life. It is all temporary. And they, these madmen, respond to the granite, the dust, the longing of the inanimate. They want to aid Notcher. And, he thought, "I know why. They want to be the agents, not the victims of history. They identify with God's power and believe they are godlike, that is their basic madness. They are overcome by some archetype, their egos have expanded psychotically so that they cannot tell where they begin and the godhead leaves off. It is not hubris, not pride, it is inflation of the ego to its ultimate, confusion between him who worships and that which is worshipped. Man has not eaten God, God has eaten man. What they do not comprehend is man's helplessness. I am weak, small, of no consequence to the universe. It does not notice me, I live on unseen. But why is that bad? Isn't it better that way? Whom the gods notice, they destroy. Be small, and you will escape the jealousy of the great." As he unfastened his own belt, Baines said, "Mr. Lotzer, I have never told anyone this. I am a Jew, do you understand?" Lotzer stared at him piteously. "You would not have known," Baines said, "because I do not in any physical way appear Jewish. I have had my nose altered, my large, greasy pores made smaller, my skin chemically lightened, the shape of my skull changed. In short, physically I cannot be detected. I can and have often walked in the highest circles of Nazi society. No one will ever discover me, and..." He paused, standing close, very close, to Lotzer, and speaking in a low voice which only Lotzer could hear. "And there are others of us, do you hear? We did not die, we still exist, we live on unseen." After a moment, Lotzer stuttered, "The security police..." "The S.D. can go over my record," Baines said. "You can report me, but I have very high connections. Some of them are Aryan, some are other Jews in top positions in Berlin. Your report will be discounted, and then presently, I will report you, and through these same connections you will find yourself in protective custody." He smiled, nodded, and walked up the aisle of the ship, away from Lotzer, to join the other passengers. Everyone descended the ramp, onto the cold, windy field. At the bottom, Baines found himself once more momentarily near Lotzer. "In fact," Baines said, walking beside Lotzer, "I do not like your looks, Mr. Lotzer, so I think I will report you anyhow." He strode on then, leaving Lotzer behind. At the far end of the field, at the concourse entrance, a large number of people were waiting, relatives, friends of passengers, some of them waving, peering, smiling, looking anxious, scanning faces. A heavyset, middle-aged Japanese man, well-dressed in a British overcoat, pointed oxfords, bowler, stood a little ahead of the others, with a younger Japanese beside him. On his coat lapel he wore the badge of the ranking Pacific Trade Mission of the Imperial Government. "There he is," Baines realized, "Mr. N. Tagome, come personally to meet me." Starting forward, the Japanese called, "Habens, good evening." His head tilted hesitantly. "Good evening, Mr. Tagome," Baines said, holding out his hand. They shook, then bowed, the younger Japanese also bowed, beaming. "Bit cold, sah, on this exposed field," Mr. Tagome said. "We shall begin return trip to downtown city by mission helicopter, is that so? Or do you need to use the facilities and so forth?" He scrutinized Mr. Baines' face anxiously. "We can start right now," Baines said. "I want to check in at my hotel, my baggage, however..." "Mr. Kotomiichi will attend to that," Mr. Tagome said. "He will follow. You see, sah, at this terminal it takes almost an hour waiting in line to claim baggage, longer than your trip." Mr. Kotomiichi smiled agreeably. "All right," Baines said. Mr. Tagome said, "Sah, I have a gift to grath." "I beg your pardon," Baines said. "To invite to our favorable attitude." Mr. Tagome reached into his overcoat pocket and brought out a small box. "Selected from among the finest objets d'art of America available." He held out the box. "Well," Baines said. Well, Baines said, thanks. He accepted the box.
All afternoon assorted officials examined the alternatives, Mr. Tagome said. This is most authentic of dying old US culture, a rare retained artifact carrying a flavor of bygone Helsion Day.
Mr. Baines opened the box. In it lay a Mickey Mouse wristwatch on a pad of black velvet. Was Mr. Tagome playing a joke on him? He raised his eyes, saw Mr. Tagome's tense, concerned face. No, it was not a joke. Thank you very much, Baines said. This is indeed incredible.
Only few, perhaps ten, authentic 1938 Mickey Mouse watches in all world today, Mr. Tagome said, studying him, drinking in his reaction, his appreciation. No collector known to me has one, sir.
They entered the air terminal and together ascended the ramp. Behind them, Mr. Kotomichi said, "Harosame ni niratsutsu yane no Tamarikana." What is that? Mr. Baines said to Mr. Tagome.
Old poem, Mr. Tagome said. Middle Tokugawa period. Mr. Kotomichi said, "As the spring rains fall, soaking in them on the roof, is a child's rag ball."
Context of white supremacy. That is the end of chapter three. We will pick up next Thursday for chapter four, Philip K. Dick, Man in the High Castle. Uh, the number again, seven two zero, seven one six, seven three hundred. Code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. Email untiljustice@gmail.com. Email again, untiljustice@gmail.com. Again, this book is widely available, uh, if you would like a hard copy to kind of follow along, uh, as we are reading e- uh, ebook, hard version, like, should be very easy to nab, especially with the Amazon series, like, probably get a super extra rare copy for a penny, there's so many. Uh, so, our investor, he continued, I'll get the rest of his notes in. Uh, he writes for chapter two, which we read in the first audio segment. Number one, I inquired of the oracle to my dismay, the ominous hexagram. The Japanese are portrayed as relying to some degree on mysticism and magical thinking. They seemingly have transferred this mystical thinking to those they dominate. The Nazis thus far are not portrayed similarly, absolutely not. Uh, number two, children's thoughts. Whom to treat politely, whom rudely? Brusque with the elevator operator, bow to the Japanese. He might see a slave. It was out of the question to let a slave see him, carrying something. A mistake of that kind could cost him dearly. Not adhering to the proper code could maybe even cost you your life. That is true. Number three, Jews, gypsies, and Bible students. Is Bible students a reference to Christianity? Could be. I haven't really heard a whole lot of religion being talked. It's been more of like, science and accomplishing things, efficiency, industrial type efficiency, and then that being contrasted, uh, and judged against, as he was saying, like, the mysticism and that type of a thing. So, yeah, could be. Uh, number four, how the Sniggers have been set back on their heels. The use of Sniggers in this context seems like a play on words, since Snigger means to laugh when used as a verb, and is used here as a noun, I guess as a less offensive form of niggers? Maybe a double entendre. In other words, these are people who are to be laughed at. Now, that makes sense too, treated like niggers. Uh, number five, the final solution of the Africa problem. Germans never stopped applying themselves, and when they did, a task, they did it right. Racist white supremacists can show you better than they can tell you. Very scientific in their methods. Number six, horrors of war cards. Only a Japanese would care about such debris. Fetishization of artifacts, worthless kitsch, really, association with white Americans by the Japanese may be another important theme. The war cards reminded me of lynching postcards. Reminded me of the same thing as well, uh, because I would think these would probably be, I mean, if they're wartime cards, it would have to be some violence and carnage, that type of thing, or at least the machinery, uh, of war that's being depicted. Uh, so I was thinking the exact same thing. Uh, let's see, chapter three, that we just read. Number one, Juliana Frank, judo instructor. It is important that those you want to dominate embrace your culture. Number two, one of those Nazi rocket ships. This may symbolize that even though the Japanese dominate to some degree, the Japanese Pacific States, the ultimate power lies with the Nazis, white people. I think that's been stated pretty consistently throughout the text, right? The real power and intellect is the whites, the Germans. Number three, the Japs. I noticed that the Japanese are referred to by the pejorative term Jap, but the Germans thus far, as I know, have not been referred to, uh, by any commonly-used pejorative terms such as Krauts, Jerry's, used during this time period. Absolutely, and that's in the TV show as well. I don't hear any... So, like I said, the Germans are our brothers. These are our fellow, the white sisters and brothers here. We're not talking bad about them. It's the Japs, Slanids, you know, these yellow-bellied, you know, no-couns that we don't like. That's, we've got problems with, no-count Slanids, not... Love the Germans, our fellow white countrymen, basically. Uh, let's see. Number four, and chink, that was the other one I was thinking of, chink. Lots of chink in the book, that's not in the TV series. Number four, old Adolf Syphilis of the brain, yet the leaders, Gabel, was still scared, still holy. He was still white, of course. Uh, number five, Mr. Baines, no German, I'm Swedish. The young German could not believe that anyone in the modern world could afford to ride on the latest Lufthansa rocket could or would not speak German, akin to seeing a black man in first class on an airplane today. Absolutely. And then not speaking English, like, you're gonna speak some Swahili nonsense and not speak German or English? Number six, they cannot tell where they begin and goodhead leaves off. This is an apt description of the godlike feeling of being a racist white supremacist. Uh, the white man has a god complex. We used to play that one, uh, on the program, uh, quite some time, some years. Matter of fact, when the cows first came into existence, the white man has got a god complex. He played it all the time, and that's talked about in Yorugu. That goes all the way back to the beginning of the Cows Book Club. Dr. Marimba Ahne talked about that in depth. Uh, number seven, Mr. Lots, I am a Jew. You would not have known. I've had my nose altered, shape of my skull changed. Interesting that the author suggests that there is an easily identifiable Jewish prototype in this fictional world. The reality is that Nazis in Germany during the 1930s had to set up complex court system in order to determine who was or was not a Jew, much of it based on ancestry, if there was uncertainty. Fascinating. I don't know how that facts into the controversy with Whoopi Goldberg this week, but anyway, uh, that is, uh, important. The author positing that there's some sort of, this is the phenotypical look of so-called German, when people can marry into being German, okay, converted. You have Sammy Davis Jr. I don't know if his picture is what they're gonna say. That is the archet- the archetypal look of a so-called German, Sammy Davis Jr. I don't think most people are gonna say that. Lots of confusion. Uh, let's see, number again, seven two zero, seven one six, seven three hundred. Code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. Uh, folks have comments to share, uh, let's see. Uh, looks like folks are spectating once again. Phew. I'm thinking back, I think, I normally do not ask for input for the book. I normally just pick myself. That way, you know, people spectate, don't have thoughts, then, hey, hopefully I picked something, and I generally pick something that at least I'm excited about, and we roll from there. Every time, when listeners, even when it's a landslide, they pick a book and then nobody participates, ah, makes it terrible. Anyway, let's see, some of the notes that I took from, uh, this section, uh, and thus one of the reasons I rarely ask for listener input about what book we are going to read. Some of the notes that I took for the second portion, uh, let's see. So this is all from chapter three. I said, it seems like this book is gonna get to raping Negroes, because we're almost kind of there. Uh, we've got these white men who are grousing about white women, and them having to prostitute themselves out, basically, in San Francisco and all the rest of it, and this is awful, and low-key lusting after Asian women, that they can't access, that they're married and all the rest of it. So, I felt like this is, this is reminding me of the Turner Diaries. I've seen this before, it's gotta be some raping Negroes, and we walk right into it the beginning of chapter three. Juliana is talking, uh, with Miss Davis, I think that's her name, and it's, "Oh my goodness, you never know what they're gonna do, Juliana said. They hide their real thoughts," talking about the Japs. "What did they make you do, Miss Davis?" Hugging her purse against her body with both arms, moved closer in the evening darkness to here darkness. "Everything," Juliana said. "Oh, God, I fight, Miss Davis," said. Now, that right there is very much, it's so awful that we can't even describe it. Oh, the beastly Negro rapist. Oh, there's Anthony Broadwater again. That's what I said, every book in the system of racism, white supremacy, got the raping Negroes gotta be there. Oh, we gotta put him down and kill them all to make sure this doesn't happen. Uh, and even the low-key, like, the rape fantasy type thing, sounding like, again, just talked about that in Lucky. Uh, let's see, next. So she's at this truck stop, talking all these white, that's like a quintessential, talk about Americana to be at the truck stop amongst all these white, uh, truck drivers, where they can grouse, uh, about the no-count Japs and all of this. Uh, she says, the young truck driver, uh, truck driver is talking, uh, I guess about Philadelphia and all these different places. Uh, she says, uh, "Hey, is it easy to get a job back there?" Talking about back east, and the younger truck driver says, "Sure, if you have the right color skin." He himself had a dark, brooding face with curly black hair, his expression had become set and bitter. "He's a wop," the older man said. Now, I thought they were part of the Axis Powers, but apparently they got that hierarchy thing, so the darker you are, ee, ee, could be a problem, like, ee, can't get a job, they're treating you like a Negro. You might be an old slave or something. Ee. He doesn't like the Japs either, though. Uh, let's see, next. Uh, if you're not happy, they're talking, he's just grumbling, "Are you going back on the road tonight?" She asked the young Italian truck driver. "Tomorrow, if you're not happy in the US, why don't you, uh, cross over permanently?" She said. "I've been living in the Rockies for a long time, it isn't so bad. I lived on the coast in San Francisco." They have the skin thing there too. Skin thing. Glancing briefly at her as he sat hunched at the counter, the young Italian said, "Lady, it's bad enough to have to spend one day or night in a town like this. Live here, Christ, if I could get any other kind of job and not have to be on the road eating my meals in a place like this." Noticing that the fry cook was red, he ceased speaking and began to drink his coffee, like, oh, what, and even, now, again, if Philip K. Dick, he can't be ignorant about racism, he knows individuals classified as not white, especially if they're black, like, this has gotta be their existence. Sitting around, about to argue and fight each other over goofiness, complaining and grousing about all the dilapidated conditions, being denied opportunities to have high quality of life, earn their way, as they say. They would know, that's, this is what it's gonna sound like, just being around constantly grousing about all your mistreatment, and being denied things, and being, you know, mis- as I said, mistreated, can't get a job, or not being compensated correctly on that job, or fearful of going to certain territories, gotta ask in advance, can you get a job out there? They'd know what it would sound like, not ignorant about racism. And, this is what it would be like for us, if we were not in a system of racism, if we were being mistreated on that skin thing, as they call it. Uh, let's see. This reminds me so much of the Turner Diaries, because they talk, they do all that grousing about so-called Jews in that book, uh, Dr. William Pierce. I think that's a concern of Darryl Bain, uh, as well, certainly, they talk about that right now, being so-called antisemitism. I said, "I lived in Boston, uh, for a while when I was a kid, and I got no special use for Jews, but I never thought I'd see that Nazi racial law get passed in the US. Even if we did lose the war, I'm surprised you aren't in the US Armed Forces, getting ready to invade some little South American republic as a front for the Germans, uh, so they can push the Japanese back a little bit more." So again, you still have that tension, and I think some of that is in the show, at least the part that I've seen, where the Germans clearly are not like, these are our homies, the Japanese, there's some aggression against them, uh, as well. Uh, but then this so-called antisemitism, and the Jews, we still, you know, got problems with them, and I didn't like them anyway, even before all this started, I didn't like the so-called Jews. I think that might be in the TV series as well, I'm not sure. At the time that this book came out, so-called Jews were not, I guess they were still greater pushback against accepting individuals who could be classified as white, accepting them if they said they were so-called Jewish. Uh, again, I don't get involved in any of that. If you're classified as Jewish, it's not the issue. If you say you are a Jew or Jew-ish, the issue is, are you accepted as white? And if there's confusion there, if I think you could be, you'd just be suspected as a white person, suspected racist. But I do not get confused about any of that. You have lots of non-white people who say they are also so-called Jewish. That's not the issue, so-called religion. They continue, they're grouse, the Japs, all the rest of it, they're about to fight themselves, very common amongst victims, uh, in the system. Mm, mm, mm. Let's see. Oh, man, now this passage, they say, uh, uh, uh. Their trouble, she decided, is with sex. They did something foul with it back in the 30s, and it has gotten worse. Hitler started it with his. What was she? His sister? Aunt? niece? And his family was inbred already. His mother and father were cousins. They're all committing incest, going back to the original sin of lusting for their own mothers. Didn't we talk about that with Woody Allen, Oedipus Rex? I think we just talked about that, right? Yes? Uh, that's why, they, those elite SS fairies. Ooh, and we talked about the homosexuality in Nazi Germany, that's, uh, two thousand eleven, wanna say, oof, two thousand eleven. Anyway, the pink swastika, there we go, two thousand eleven. Uh, had that angelic semper, that blonde, baby-like innocence, they're saving themselves for mama or for each other, like, whoa. Whoa, is all that in the Amazon series? Dr. Martin Kovorkian was just on the program last week. He didn't just talk about all this white nostalgia that's in this book series. He also, uh, on a previous visit, he talked about the system of white supremacy, if it's all about maintaining individuals classified as white and the phenotypical characteristics that we associate commonly with that classification, uh, the paleness and the blonde head they're talking about, blue eyes and everything else, uh, in order to achieve that, individuals classified as white are a tiny minority of the population. It requires Oedipus Rex. Dr. Kovorkian said this, you can go back in the archives, it requires having sex with your brothers and sisters and mothers and all the rest of that, because there's just not that many white people on the planet. That sort of thing comes up repeatedly in white culture, a system of white supremacy, over and over again. So I mean, to see it pop out in this, like, whoa. The whole Hitler and syphilis thing, that's supposed to be based on some evidence as well, unless I've been misinformed. Be curious if Mr. Fuller read this, like, it's been around long enough, he might at least be aware of it. He thought, okay, so this is when he's talking about the so-called Germans, we can just apply this to white people, the system of white supremacy. He thought, it is something they do, something they are. It is their unconsciousness, their lack of knowledge about others. They're not being aware of what they do to others, the destruction they have caused and are causing. No, he thought, that isn't it. I don't know. I sense it, intuit it, but they are purposely cruel. Is that it? No. God, he thought, I can't find it, make it clear. Do they ignore parts of reality? Yes, but it is more. It is their plans, yes, their plans, the conquering of the planets, something frenzied and demented. something frenzied and demented, as was their conquering of Africa and before that, Europe and Asia. Their view, it is cosmic, not of a man here, a child there, but air, abstraction, race, land." And then he goes on, not good men, not honorable, all that, but that, I mean, in my view, that applies to white culture, individuals classified as white, exactly what we have right now. In fact, I mentioned Yarugoo, Dr. Marimba Ahne, and she talked about, she has a whole section on the mad scientist. Not, that's Yarugoo, the whole Asili, not in balance with the Creator, with nature, which is exactly what is said, Philip K. Dick, in this passage uh, right here. Conquer nature, against the Creator, feeling some sort of uh, competition. Go out and destroy, conquer everything, can't live in unison with the planet, gotta go out and destroy and conquer and dominate all the other people and all the other animals and all the other planets, exactly as said in the book. Jeff Bezos right now. Let's see. Anything else? Anything else? When we get to the end here, Mr. Baines, when he's talking to Mr. Lotz, Mr. Lotz is uh, German. Mr. Baines, you know, told him he was Swedish at first, then he comes back and says, "Well, actually, I'm a Jew." He says, "I altered my large, greasy pores, made smaller my skin, chemically lightened, uh, my skin, the shape of my skull changed." How do you even do that? Phrenology? What? "In short, physically, I cannot be detected. I can and have often walked in the highest circles of Nazi society. No one will ever discover me." And he paused, standing close, very close to Lotz, and speaking in a low voice, which Lotz could only hear. "And there are others of us. Do you hear? We did not all die. We still exist." Now, some of this has been presented, fear of white people having infiltrators, people that can't be detected, pass, so-called passing amongst them, right? Uh, so-called Jews or anybody else who really is a non-white person, but they're able to be undetected amongst us. That's been a long-running concern uh, in the system of white supremacy, but this whole process of getting there sounds painfully familiar. You have to do all of this chemical mutilation. How do you change your skull? To be accepted as white, like, the amount of self-hate and self, uh, mutilation, my goodness. Again, Philip K. Dick not ignorant about white supremacy racism. Uh, I think I got through all of my notes. Uh, let me see. We had spectators. Generally, uh, folks start out, they'll participate, and then they'll be like, eh, not following, this is goofy, ah, you know, go watch the movie and all the rest, so. Generally, if we start out and don't have very much participation, probably would just be me commenting on this, which I hate. Again, that is exactly why we generally do not vote. Way more people will put a hand up and, yeah, let's do this and have zero contribution in terms of thoughts, questions, follow in the book, that sort of thing, which, why do a book club if, you know, you're not gonna engage or participate? Don't make that mistake very often, but maybe folks will chime in as we roll. Uh, let's see, did, uh, I read, did you have any other comments to share before we get ready to uh, wrap things up?
Oh, I was just listening, um, ah, I think, um...
If you're listening, that's fine. It's, it's not required.
No, well, oh, yeah, that's true, but, you know, just the whole, the thing with the skin thing and, and what you were saying about the bickering and everything, you know, and finding a way to uh, put that in there and, and the uh, showcasing that, you know, that non-white people are, non-white, black people are so, um, dispensable, you know, even in, um, dystopian times, we have no, you know, no purpose on planet Earth, you know, except to stand around and wait for somebody, even if, if it's for an hour. It's really sad that someone could forecast that type of purview. You know, into the future, even if it's science fiction, you know, it's still from the heart, you know, maybe I'm being too emotional about my analysis, but yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
Mr. Dick, not ignorant about the dynamics of white supremacy racism, individuals classified as white in general. Not ignorance about the people dynamics of white supremacy racism, and I think just any of it, Dr. Welzing, talking about making accurate predictions, right, about things that are gonna happen and what people will be doing. I think the more informed you are about white supremacy racism, you can be much more accurate. That's how Dr. Welzing, who talked about, hey, y'all should read this, study Nazi Germany. Check this out. That's how she could accurately predict more than a year in advance. Oh, yeah, that Trump fella is gonna win. Much better understanding of racism. Philip K. Dick, great understanding of the dynamics of what this system produces amongst the victims and all the rest of it, so. Probably be a lot of that we can pay attention to as we are moseying through uh, the book. Hopefully, folks won't spectate the whole time through, but, you know, we'll see. Anywho, we'll be here tomorrow, neutralizing workplace racism, uh, Saturday, compensatory call-in, and Monday, Iya Gruber, uh, been reading her book, which is pretty interesting as well, white women and their role in locking, caging, black people like Anthony Broadwater. Anywho, uh, that will wrap us uh, for this week's section. Much obliged for folks uh, participating, live archive. Hope it was worthy of your time and energy. Sobriety would be best under conditions of white supremacy. We would need fully functioning brain computers to solve this problem. In addition to being sober, let us be buckled every time we are in a vehicle. Uh, if you're gonna be driving, you're buckled sober, not on the cell phone. We need all of our attention. If you're out and about, no confrontations verbally with strangers. You should be thinking, this could be Chris Kyle. If you didn't leave your residence, prepare to kill and/or die. Exit. Uh, you have no idea who is armed AK or assault rifle, all the rest, ready to inflict carnage. All of that said, Creator, we ask that you help us remain patient with other black people, victims of white supremacy. We ask that you help us remain patient with ourselves. Remind us to partis- or, excuse me, remind us to demonstrate the highest levels of black self-respect at all times, in all places, each and every time we are in contact with another black person. It has been time. Replace white supremacy with justice immediately. Cows signing out. Thanks all for tuning in.